You're talking about this council meeting? It is, we're on channel for twelve?
Twelve.
Is it rerun? Can I see it again?
It's still on there, yeah.
Okay. I can't find my... I don't have my sign thing. No, not with anything? No, can I?
Right.
No, you? I think it should be pretty straightforward.
Here.
Chairman Willoughby? Mr. Willoughby?
Yes.
Mrs. Bateman?
Yes.
Mr. Kish?
Yes.
Mrs. Holland?
Yes.
Chairman Willoughby?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay. Item number four, public hearing and application, sign. Who has that? Okay.
Yes, this is for a sign waiver request by Domino's Pizza located at seventy-seven eleven Old Sandy Spring Road, just west of City Hall. They would like to add a second Domino's sign on the south side of the building facing State Road one ninety-eight. The proposed sign's two and a half feet by thirteen feet. It's non-electronic message board. As a condition of approval, the applicant will repaint the south building wall from the existing red and blue to white. The planning department notes substantial impairment of visibility from State Road one ninety-eight due to existing trees. The building is also located a hundred feet from State Road one ninety-eight. The variance will not be detrimental to the east adjacent gas station, which has clear visibility from State Road one ninety-eight, and it will not be detrimental to the west adjacent city property. It is recommended that the planning commission approve the requested sign modification as shown in attachment number one, recommendation detail, with a condition to repaint the entire south side of the building to the color white.
The signed contractor representing the applicant's here, if you should have any questions for him.
This seems rather straightforward. Does anyone have any particular questions? As you go around and look at the site, as you go around and look at the site, you kind of wonder why this wasn't done earlier.
A long time ago, yeah.
If there are no questions, we'll entertain a motion for approval.
Mr. Chairman, I move approval of the sign waiver application, Domino's, seven-seven-one-one Old Sandy Spring Road, filed by Star Neon Signs, and also action on resolution number one-three dash zero-one dash PC.
Bless your heart. Thank you. Is there a second?
I will second that.
Thank you, Mr. Kish.
Mrs. Bateman?
Yes.
Mr. Kish?
Yes.
Mr. Willoughby?
Yes.
Mrs. Holland?
Yes.
Chairman Willoughby?
Yes.
Motion carries.
What do I have here right now? Final action by the planning commission? Is that the, we just took care of those two, four and five?
Four, five, and six.
Okay, thank you. I'm looking at item seven, final plan of revitalization overlay, R-oh-six dash one dash twenty-twelve, three fifty Municipal Square, filed by Klingbeal Capital Management. Who has that?
Unfortunately, for your greatest fear, you have me the rest of the evening. With your permission, I know, I'm not looking at this face. With your permission, what I'd like to do, since this is not the first time you've seen this, is to concentrate on the recommendations. Little has changed. The applicant is going to give you a quick presentation of the site plan, obviously. But again, little has changed, except we have fine tuned some of the things that we brought up. So briefly, I'd like to get the fact that, of course, the recommendation is for approval of this complex. And as stated before, I just want to quickly go over the recommendations. As a future hub of the Arts Entertainment District, specifically on C Street, any units in the property may be used for an artist's residence, studio, gallery, or other combination or artistic use of the premises. Unfortunately, this would not cover uses that violate city building codes such as welding or other activities that violate noise ordinances or other codes. The developer, in order to further the city's development of the Arts Entertainment District, as part of the overlay exaction, has agreed to contribute one hundred thousand dollars to an old project that this will help bring to life, and that is the feasibility and study of the creation of a natural amphitheater at the Patuxent River, adjacent, somewhere adjacent to the site, site to be determined. This project is now included in the city's capital program, which will be in front of the mayor and city council in the next few weeks. Startup money will be used for feasibility and pre-engineering, and dealing with the Maryland Department of the Environment to see if their project is feasible. The amphitheater goes back to the old legacy program many years ago, so this is hopefully, we're trying to get a jumpstart. Staff also recommends that developer fund an ornament, this is a little more, I was hoping to get a better picture of this, but an ornamental masthead fixture, which basically is a, it's a lamppost fixture that has two mast arms, where you hang banners down, which we'd like to have the Arts District, or, you know, have those people have different things displayed depending on events and things like that. One of the recommended areas, although we're not recommending a specific area, is just south of the town Christmas tree at C and Main Street, where there's that semi-garden in there. But again, we leave that specific thing up to others in the city. The next one is a little more unusual, something that the, since the applicant has offices in San Francisco, you recommend this, and it really is fascinating, and it's called a parklet. And a parklet is something that was spawned by the city of San Francisco's Parks and Recreation Department that takes the sidewalk cafe one step further, and then makes it a public space. So the parklet that we will encourage, hopefully you'll give us the discretion, to have mostly seating, it might have a landscape area and stuff like that, where people can come and sit without having to worry about a waiter coming over and taking their order. Or if it happens there was a cafe or a business right across the street, they could certainly come and bring their purchase with them and sit in there. And of course, the complex would be responsible for maintenance and garbage and things like that, so.
Before you go on, I just, I know you were looking curiously as to what was, I went on the internet to, and downloaded just some examples of parklets, so
Oh, thank you.
the commission could get a sense of what a parklet looks like.
Bringing the west coast east.
A couple of those are in Philadelphia.
Oh, wonderful.
So I kind of went, you know, up and down the, around the US.
Thank you.
I think it's a very interesting use of space that we have. On the B Street side, though, there isn't as much room. However, we do recommend the placement of trees with grates and possible benches. Although we have to be sensitive, because without offense to the city's homeless community, the benches will have to have a center partition in them, if they're placed there at all, because we do not want to encourage people that are residentially challenged to use them as their homes. Unfortunately, and then because you're near the river and near the railroad tracks, that's an unfortunate reality of life, so we'll be reporting back to you on the status of that one, provided that you approve this. The parking, the parking for this complex has more than one unit. We delivery do not want, this is not a suburban project. This is the first of a change in how we do things. But as such, if you remember the Hawthorne project, we're asking that the applicant provide a contract for a zip car, because it makes, I think it makes it very attractive to a resident who would like to go to the meat market, would like to go to all these places on Main Street, but might need a car for the extra trip to the Giant, or, you know, to something like that. So we're asking that they provide at least provisions for one zip car. Parks and Recreation has weighed in, and of course, they had amount that the contribution to that left to balance the sixty-five hundred, so we're asking them to give us a contribution to the amphitheater of one hundred and six thousand five hundred dollars. This particular block, as the commission well knows, the city is riddled with all kinds of paper alleys, most of which have complicated comings and goings, some are public, some are shared, some are all over the place. So Mr. Manziger, city attorney, has been working with all the people in the block that's bounded by the river, by B, by C, and by Main Street, to erase the paper lines in their, in the particular block. So as the applicant moves forward to start the project, he would also come and erase the lines with the consent of others. I mean, they're all going to have to consent to that. But they've done a number of background searches on title, and most of the people involved see it as a good thing. It's an encumbrance, because basically you get, you have the right to use the half of somebody's alley next to you, and they have the right to use half of yours, and they've never been open. They're paper streets. In fact, one of them goes underneath the former Safeway building, which turned into City Hall, which turned into the Police Department. So we don't really see that they serve a big purpose. They submitted a lighting plan, the Public Works Department is in the process of doing that. We're very sensitive to the lighting in this particular thing. We'd like to see lights maybe in the Carriageway and stuff like that, to make sure that these things are not attractive. As you have to remember, as you'll see this, it is a campus, it is not just a singular building. And I'll let the applicant explain that further, because I'm trying not to be redundant to them. So we agree with the Department of Public Works. They recommended that we have strict compliance with parking regulations. I simply disagree. I think the amount of parking is, you know, well, the number of people that are attracted to this, this is not a place, it is a place for very special kind of things. It's a place that has two roles, basically, one being for artists, and the other being a secondary, you're going to have, you actually have two transitory developments, because it's just a matter of a few steps over the railroad station for this complex as well. So we don't want to be in the business providing acres of parking that sit there and drain into the Patuxent River, which drains into the bay. And we think that that thing will work. As such, the applicant also, you probably saw, submitted a fiscal impact analysis. What the administration does is use that analysis in its budgeting every year. Every applicant, including the ones, and I haven't told tonight, they're sitting in the audience, have to submit a fiscal impact analysis to the city when their projects reach the final stage as well. And again, that's, it's very useful information to the mayor and city council when they do their budgeting procedures. So with that, I'll leave it there, and let our recommendations stand at the conditions which we recommended to you. The applicant is here to make a very, very brief presentation to you, if you would like to.
As brief as yours?
That's brief for me.
Yeah, that's what I was getting. I think we could all benefit from such, so please take the ball and run with it. Identify yourself for the record, please.
Good evening, commissioners, it's a pleasure to be before you again. Mark, Mark Mullen with Klingbeal Capital.
Push it towards you.
How's that? Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Sorry. Good evening, commissioners, Mark Mullen with Klingbeal Capital Management. It's a pleasure to be before you again. I think it wasn't that long ago that we had a substantive conversation about this project, and since that time, we have taken your comments, staff's comments, as we have all the way along, incorporated them into what Carl's described to you. This evening, again, Jim Coward, president of our company's here, Brady Earhart, who runs our construction division, and Tim Longfellow with Gutchick, Little, and Weber, our civil engineers here. And they're, well, at least these two are available to answer questions. I think Jim is overseeing operations here tonight. And with that, I'm happy to just simply open it up to questions, because I know you have a heavy calendar this evening.
You want questions, or do you want some pictures to replace the words?
I'm going to pack it, it's good.
How about you? Any questions?
Absolutely, of course.
Mr. Mullen, good evening.
Good evening.
I know we've had an opportunity to get some information about traffic flows. But for those of us who may not have had the advantage of hearing any discussions regarding traffic, there are times that Main Street in and of itself can, you know, have its traffic challenges with the added one hundred and thirty-plus units that will be in this development with the anticipated activity from the Arts District as a whole. Can you give us what considerations you were given regarding this project and traffic?
Well, as you may know, we engaged a traffic consultant who did an exhaustive study, and the consultant didn't, did not recommend that we install any traffic control measures at the two intersections there with Main Street. I suppose if the city, if the city would like, we could put some speed bumps in on, you know, B and C Streets. But my review of the traffic study suggests that we, that the traffic, the mitigating measures that are in place are sufficient. Now, how that plays out in actual fact may be different, but that's what the study says.
And I'm not trying to belabor this, but I'm just interested that there's, there's no, from the data that you've collected, no anticipated impacts to traffic by adding the number of units and the other, again, anticipated activities that will be in that general area of Main Street and C Street. And not that, speed bumps, I don't think would be anything close to what we'd like to, like to see, but I'm just, you know, just interested in having some sense of any kind of traffic control. But you've stated, you don't expect any.
May I jump in on that one?
Please do.
As Mr. Mullen will tell you, we had quite a conversation on, because one of the big problems, as you know, and one of the reasons you brought it up, I'm sure, is that when you're coming up from a side street, your visibility just stinks
That's right.
on Main Street. So we had a long conversation about bump outs that would happen in these. Bump outs are neat, because you can landscape them, you can put a sidewalk cafe in them and stuff like that. But they were, I'm not going to use the word vehemently, they were opposed by the public safety committee, public safety community, because they felt that service vehicles were compromised in getting around into the side streets by the presence of the bump out. So we kind of abandoned going there, because we were hoping to especially have one at B and C, and they were not, our Public Works Department was not particularly happy about us suggesting that.
I will, I will say this, just from my own personal experience, having lived in San Francisco for a long time and seen developments go up in dense developments in trap, heavily, not heavily trafficked, but equally trafficked streets, very similar. One mistake that San Francisco made that I always thought they should rectify, but we have a parking issue there, just generally speaking, is they allow people to park all the way to the corner. And I don't know if Laurel does that or not, but if you don't do that, that gives the driver a line of sight, which really takes, really helps with that particular issue.
It does, but bringing in a delivery truck, it compromises your site systems.
Right, it does.
That's temporary.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Chairman, thank you, Mr. Mullen.
I have, I have item seven listed. Carol Williams?
Good evening, my name is Carol Williams, and I am owner of forty-four B Street. We have an aunt that lives there, who is quite elderly, on oxygen. And I think one of the main concerns is that, you know, she has a handicap space now, and anytime there's visitors, because, just merely because of Fred Frederick's new construction, there's really no places to park around there now. If she has any visitors come in, or, you know, emergency vehicles that come in could block it. And now with this presentation coming up in this large facility, we're just wondering, you know, what else is it going to bring? We, when we came to the meetings for Mr. Frederick, we were promised that his property would not allow vehicles to come out on C Street, or to, I mean, on B Street, or to park on B Street. But that's all you see now, and probably every minute, every fi, or five minutes, there's vehicles that come and go out of the area that they're not even supposed to be. It says for emergency vehicles only. So if that's the case, then what is this going to bring? Thank you.
Who has an answer for that call?
I do.
Carl.
Mrs. Williams is correct, the site plan for Mr. Frederick was approved, not to have anything, but the administration decided to be an entry point for emergency vehicles only. It sounds like that intent is being violated. So we will definitely take that to the administration to see. It's a valid concern.
Will that address and resolve the problem?
Well, for one thing, if anybody parks in your handicap space, call the police immediately. Is the space coded to her?
Yes.
Okay.
There's one, one concern, one is the oxygen, the oxygen truck can't get in, and there's his tow trucks are parked almost all the way down to the end of the street at various points.
As the expression goes, I'll take that one down the hall to see what can come up.
In terms of the plans for this, where is that emergency, does, will the emergency service road that you referred to, does that, does this have any bearing on that road?
No, not really.
Okay, so that should remain
The entry point to this is a little further away.
That should remain, okay.
Hold on, let's go back.
Yeah, it's on B Street.
But Carl, my question is, will it, with the building of this, does that road that is currently for emergency use only, does it lose that designation and becomes a regular traffic street, or it will remain?
I would think not, because that was the
Okay, so if you can get the city to
Because there is a sign posted that effect.
Okay.
I'll say that, but.
Is the sign honored?
No, that's what she said.
I'm getting the impression that it's not.
So, but the question is, what can we do to resolve it?
Well, again, I'm not, I can only take it down the hall to
Okay.
relate to the Williams concerns and
And you'll do that?
And we will get back with them, yes.
Okay, and we'll let Mrs. Williams know what's going on?
Absolutely.
Okay, thank you. Bill, you got something?
One thing, I went down the other day, and I sat there on the property and kind of, kind of viewed the action there on that entrance. And Mrs. Williams is absolutely right, there are, about every five or ten minutes, somebody comes around there and exits from there. When you come around that building, it's really a narrow, tight turn to do that. It's not something that is going to be an easy thing for people to pass around there all the time. It's got to be just because they, they need to make that shortcut. But what I noticed is, all along the back of the building there are chains that are draped from pole to pole, with the exception of that one entrance. And it would seem to me that a breakaway barrier, just like another chain from that pole, if an emergency vehicle had to get in there and somehow make that tight turn, he could simply drive through that chain. But even an emergency fire truck or something, a large vehicle's going to have a tough time getting in there and making those hairpin turns to maneuver around that building. But I would think that it should, it could easily be some type of breakaway barrier there.
It would certainly be better than what's there today. It appears to be more ornamental than anything else.
But it keeps, it is ornamental, but if that one more link was put in there, it would keep anybody from just maneuvering around there for a quick
It is not meant to be a general driveway.
A lazy way to get out of there, rather than go around the way they should.
Yes, I agree with you. But we'll definitely take this.
It's still going down the hall?
Absolutely.
Okay.
It's above my pay grade, as I say all the time.
Any more questions? Comments?
I was curious about a couple of things. I noticed two addresses for the project. You got three fifty Municipal Square and twenty C Street, I believe it is. What will be the official?
Three fifty will fade into obsolescence. It was, you know, like I said, it was an old way of addressing City Hall, and it will, it will cease to exist after this.
Something else I was kind of wondering about the retaining wall, where the property meets the Patuxent wooded area there. About how, how high would that wall become once it's formed?
They're in the process of sternward management. Now, if I can, direct that to the applicant's civil.
Good evening, Tim Longfellow with Gutchick, Little, and Weber.
Thank you.
The retaining wall will vary to, up to about five to six feet in height.
Oh.
And what it'll do is just allow the pool deck to be level in that area. As you know, the grate falls off, so in order to get the pool deck, that's why we're going to need the retaining wall.
So that area from the retaining wall to the river path, are there any plans to kind of sweep through there and clean all that underbrush and all that, kind of thin that out through there?
I can answer that. You could be, you could be crucified by the Maryland Department of Environment for doing anything near the river. You can do nothing without their permission. Would it look much better? Yes, and that's why a lot of the money the applicant is contributing to the CIP project. It may be, I cannot guarantee, that MDE will say, not in this lifetime will you build this amphitheater because of things it might do to the river. Or it could shift it up or down the river, depending on what is suitable, you know, in the terrain of the river. But they're very, I know they were doing some, they wanted to do some selective tree clearing one time, and you would have thought we were going to come out with guns.
Is it going to be the same case for the planning of the amphitheater?
Absolutely. Like they said, like, that's why they have to get into feasibility, dealing with the Maryland Department of the Environment, because the Patuxent River is, you know, has a huge commission of which our
So that may or may not happen.
It may not, right.
So if it doesn't, would that, that money that's tagged for that right now be able to be swung over to some other project that might
Probably, but since it comes, from, originates from this commission's approval, we'll come back
Good evening, Tim Longfellow with Good Chick Little and Weber. The retaining wall will vary to, up to about five to six feet in height.
Oh.
And what it'll do is just allow the, the pool deck to be level in that area. As you know, the grade falls off, so in order to get the pool deck, that's why we're going to need the retaining wall.
So, that area from the retaining wall to the river path, are there any plans to, to kind of sweep through there and clean all that underbrush and all that, kind of thin that out through there?
I, I can answer that. You could be, you could be crucified by the Maryland Department of Environment for doing anything near the river. You can do nothing without their permission. Would it look much better? Yes, and that's why a lot of the money the applicant is contributing to the CIP project. It, it may be, I cannot guarantee, that MDE will say, not in this lifetime will you build this amphitheater because of things it might do to the river, or it could shift it up or down the river, depending on what is suitable, you know, in the terrain of the river. But they're very, I know they were doing some, they wanted to do some selective tree clearing one time, and you would have thought we were going to come out with guns.
Is it going to be the, uh, the same case for the planning of the amphitheater?
Absolutely. Like, they said, like, that's why they have to get into feasibility, dealing with the Maryland Department of Environment, because the Patuxent Rivers, you know, has a huge commission of which our.
So, that may or may not happen.
It may not, right.
So, if it doesn't, would that, that money that's tagged for that right now be able to be swung over to some other project? That might.
Probably, but since it comes, it forms, originates from this commission's approval, we'll come back to, we'll make the Department of Parks and Recreation come back to before, before it's redirected. But keep in mind that it could be a year or two before that feasibility is even done. It won't happen quickly, unfortunately. Dealing with, and I'm, I'm not criticizing the state, but I mean, state processes, especially environmental ones, take a while to go through. There's a lot of analysis that they do.
Got to earn their pay. Got to earn their pay, of course.
I guess so.
Okay. Are there any more questions? Are we ready for a recommendation? Chair is open. Is anyone, I don't have any other listed people for item seven. Is there anyone? Okay, please.
Hi, my name's Deb Randall. I run Venus Theater, the Play Shack at twenty-one C Street, right across the street from Randy Kroup, who's here tonight as well. I've been there for seven years and Randy's been there for eighty-seven years. And then our friend Missy has a hair salon and Dr. Fisher has the dentist. So, first of all, I want to thank you, Carl, for being so approachable and this whole team and this commission. I've talked to people at Hyattsville and other areas that say that this is sort of a missing element. And I just want to say thanks and we're really fortunate to have all of these interested parties having intelligent conversations. So, let me just start with that. I think our biggest concern, and jump in Randy, is the street parking. Because right now, it is dead, unfortunately, but the advantage is, when I have a show, people can park right in front of the theater and it's a great asset for me. And so, and the same thing with Missy. She has a lot of elderly clients where they come in on walkers and then also a styrofoam head in hand, so they get their hair done twice. And it's awesome. And we, their husbands wait out front for them. They tend to be older people and Dr. Fisher as well. I know Missy and Dr. Fisher paved an area around the corner, but they can only park about two cars there and five if they're super tiny smart cars. So, I think our big concern, at least for the transition, is what about our, our patrons, our customers? How do we grow them as, as the physical bricks and mortar grow? And that, that's just my, my biggest concern right now.
If I may, I'd like to react to that. This is one of my favorite subjects. When this, assuming this complex becomes operational, one of the things we're going to do very carefully is, and Mrs. Williams has already brought it up, is to watch carefully who uses B and C streets because, yeah, it's meant for businesses to thrive. So, we may be looking at business restrictions and then even though we have more than sufficient parking, we think inside this complex, one thing where you cannot do, and this is not the lead the horse to water comment, but we can, we can do, we can create all the garages in front of houses in the world, but we can't force people to park in them. We did, it happens at Archstone, it happens all over the place, is we provide parking and then someone, let's just say, for example, on the B Street side, rents an apartment. Well, it's just so much easier for me to park out in the streets, I don't have to be bothered going in here. So, one thing that I would advocate that having public safety look at potential parking restrictions in the future, so to make sure the residents stay inside their development. Because I said, a lot of the parking problems we have in residential and commercial developments, you provide parking and that doesn't mean they're going to use it. They're going to use the path of least resistance to do, to, to access.
Say that, can you, just have the residents stay inside of what?
You, you can provide garages, yeah, but if it's.
Okay, okay.
If you had like, there are many places, and I'll give you a good example where this is the case where the, where the city has reacted to specialized needs. Many places in northwest Washington want, for not restricted northwest, when there is a church, to make sure the church can survive on Sunday mornings, parking is only allowed for churchgoers during certain hours. It gives them a chance to get in, get out, and then the rest of the neighborhood has it after that, so. And I'm not saying we would necessarily do that in BNC, but when this thing opens and it starts filling up, we're going to take a very long, hard look at BNC streets.
So, I guess I have a question. Because she brings up a very valid point. I mean, we've been trying to grow the Main Street businesses forever and I've been to some of those businesses and there's not a lot of parking there. So, is there any thought that we could have some type of restriction just on that particular area at the onset? So that, I mean, because even during construction, you're going to have a whole lot of vehicles there, um, construction vehicles. And so, they're going to be impacted from the time it breaks ground until it's done. And we know with apartments, as you said, you can't make people go in and they're always visitors. And so, where are those people going to park? They're going to naturally park on the residential streets. So, is there a way that we can have some type of, or make a recommendation as part of the approval for the restriction?
Make a recommendation, that way it keeps it in the till, because you have to, we don't decide, but Public Works, where the staging area is going to be for these places. Obviously, construction workers, you know, parking and stuff like that, so I, I do think we need to take this serious. When I, when I was suggesting, I was talking about permanent parking solutions, but I do think there's some temporary ones that might be appropriate in the meantime for this. Because this is the start of something else, I hate to put it that way, but, and we have to watch it carefully. But these streets have been, as, as Deb said, they've been kind of easy to get to for a long time. So, with the price of popularity comes certain congestion, so it's trying to balance those two forces.
The discussion this evening is one of the things, for me, I've been a Laurel resident since nineteen ninety-one. I don't have privy to this kind of historical knowledge, so it always comes out new and I defer and appreciate the input of everybody up here. It's very helpful. Are there any more questions or comments?
Mr. Chairman, I, I, I have to agree with Ms. Holland that, that it's, I think it's, it's our duty to make sure that those existing businesses that have, have been a part of the, that part of the community for some time get some, some real consideration when it comes to parking restrictions and for, for their patrons. So, I, I certainly encourage the commission to consider making it a condition that some consideration, very serious consideration be given to having certain parking restrictions with our existing businesses in mind.
Without knowing what I'm talking about, is there any conditioning beforehand to make it prohibitive for people to stay in the old habits or create the problems that we're trying to avoid? With police enforcement or something like signs?
A lot of places, and sometimes it's not successful, I'll give you a good example. Patuxent Place has a large parking lot. It has never been filled in twenty-five years. But that does not stop people who, and I'm not going to call them lazy, can just so easily park out front and they don't care. And a lot of them are residents.
Okay.
I won't mention where, you know, they, all over the place. And they, they need to be nudged back into where they belong to make sure the street is, is saved for business, for business patrons.
And sometimes I'm getting at parking violations in our area, they put a little orange sticker on it, which inconveniences you to have to go down to get a ticket. Explain doing that beforehand, does that, is that a possibility for?
Well, on Main Street, a lot of places, we already have some, two are parking zones, it's like, you know, if you have business on this street, chances are you could have it all done if you're only not, if you're just coming to have your hair done or for whatever reason. It, it sends a signal that, that long-term parking is not tolerated. But having said that, after you erect the sign, you had better follow up on that. That's always a challenge for us.
Go, please.
My question would be, and, and I agree in terms of trying to do something on B seat, B Street and C Street, I do hope that the people in this patronize your businesses too. But the question of putting conditions on this applicant.
Right.
For that, I don't see those two mixing. So, is the commis-, I mean.
I would go back to what Ms. Holland said, to plant the seed with saying that the city needs to look at this and that sends it to the next step.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's not the applicant.
Right, okay, because I was going to say that what's before us tonight is the applicant's request for the overlay. So, what is our process then in asking the city to look at B Street?
Right, because the bottom line is, if they create their congestion, they will not succeed either.
That's correct.
That was assumed, okay. Okay. And considerations are what we're talking about now, that impact them, okay. Any more comments or questions? I'm ready to entertain a motion on the application before us now. Don't all speak at once.
I don't understand the recommendation part, so.
I mean, my, I, I move that adoption of the final plan of revitalization overlay, R zero six one, two zero one two, three fifty Municipal Square, filed by Klingbelle Capital Management and Action on Resolution Number one two dash one one P C, as recommended by the city.
And if we could add to that, to strengthen the concerns of Public Works, that those conditions are met, I mean, not to take from the motion, but the financial report is fine and the Parks and Rec report, but all of the concerns of Public Works, did we have as part of the motion that those concerns are part of the motion?
The, the recommendation the staff report does include the Department of Public Works memorandum, with the exception.
Right.
Of meeting the, what I call the suburban standard of parking spaces for apartments. The other comments they've made, including, you know, I.
Everything was met except the inside.
Still in their memorandum.
So, they've already extensively reviewed, the Public Works has extensively, they've reviewed all of this.
Right, this particular applicant did his comprehensive traffic study at the very beginning. And that's, you know, the reason that they were, I'm not saying, you know, went out, but they were further along. Now, because they're in a backstreet, their, their traffic, and I'm not a traffic engineer, diffuse differently than the next applicant, or the other applications we'll see this evening. But as such, they, they just didn't warrant because what Public Works does, unless you reach a level of, unless you go beneath a level of Service D, that's acceptable. And to my knowledge, nowhere in the applicant's traffic study did he even get to a C. So, it makes it difficult to look at anything more specific than that.
So, I mean, I guess I still have a concern as to how they're going to address then. I mean, if, if this, the Public Works has reviewed it and they didn't bring up any of the parking issues, how can we, I mean, as, as far as proving, proving, if we approve this without any of the concerns being addressed, how can they, how can we force that on them after the fact? I'm just kind of.
Necessarily on them. Um, one, and one of the manifestations is might be referred to the Council of Manic Committee on Public Safety and Transportation, of which they staffed. It doesn't necessarily vest it just in them.
Okay.
It could also be sent to the Emergency Services Commission and to make sure that, you know, they're looking at vehicles and things like that. Because now the ESC, the Emergency Services, has already looked at the, the carriage ways and how their, you know, their equipment can get in inside the, you know, the interior of this development. But I would definitely follow, you know, recommend you follow through and ask for that to happen. Don't assume that it's at an end, a dead end.
I'm still waiting for a second.
I will second that.
Thank you, Mr. Kish.
But I want to find, I want to find a recommendation, how we're going to do that, that they do this.
I don't know where this fits into the scope of things relative to the application. How we, how are we going to ensure that the considerations of the citizens and the parking and all that gets addressed?
What I would recommend is that you add a condition that says that the, the city and, will work with the applicant and others to analyze parking and circulation patterns on B and C Street currently and as might exist after the development opens.
Does that meet your concerns, Mr. Kish?
Well, I mean.
Second.
It's beyond a little bit of circulation issue, it's really about making sure that there's, you know, like Fred Frederick is, you know, apparently appears to be, based on what I'm hearing, violating the use of the one street and then we have the businesses. So, it's, it's, I, I guess it would be a different word as opposed to cir-, well, circulation would be part of it, but also parking for the existing businesses.
And I defer to you, how do we get, how do we get this into the consideration as it impacts the application?
Yeah, that's, that's what I'm suggesting that they do, I'm sorry.
Condition of the motion?
Yeah, that, that you, you basically charge the administration in a condition to do that.
With a member of the council sitting right here too, right?
Well, that's, yeah, it's all part of that.
Nothing's done in secret.
I would hope.
I would hope so.
Just speak to the, speak to the mic so this gets on the record too, please. Because clearly, everybody's heard the considerations and, and care about.
It's Carol Williams. I just wanted to add in on your motion that you made, that maybe you could add in there. You keep saying for businesses, but businesses and residents.
Okay.
Not for the parking area?
We have all.
Okay.
It's valid, Mrs. Williams, they, there are three single-family detached homes on the far side of B Street, between that and the, the back of, of River Banks parking, so it's, it should include both. Because I mean, again, with her mother's handicap space and the need of people, it all falls into the same bailiwick. I don't think it should be restricted to business.
Do you have, do we have satisfied the requirements for making the motion? But I have something I want to say after you all got this thing motioned. No, you made the motion, Mr. Kish seconded with a recommendation, all right, that has been added to. Have, have you made a motion and do you have a second to the motion?
I, uh, seconded her motion.
Well, I understand.
But I want to make sure that the residents and the business people on that street,
Right.
This matter is looked into.
Okay.
And it's something that's not thrown to the side later on when this building gets going.
That, that is heard.
Because I know what parking problems are and Carl will tell you how I know that.
That is heard. I don't want it to be a part of the recommendation or any part of this decision we're getting ready to vote on.
Right, because it's, you're not.
But I enjoin the citizens affected to be the squeaky wheel that stays on their case to make sure it's addressed.
Oh, I can squeak.
Okay. Are we ready for a vote? Please.
Mrs. Bettman?
Yes.
Mr. Kish?
Yes.
Mr. Welford?
Yes.
Mrs. Holland?
Yes.
Chairman Welford?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Resolution. Okay. Thank you. Where am I now? Number eleven? Where are we now?
Yeah, I'm sorry.
It's eleven, isn't it?
Sorry, sorry.
That's where it will get done. Okay, I'm looking at item eleven, map amendment application number eight two nine, ordinance number seventeen sixty-five. We've been down this road before also.
Okay, thanks. If I may, Mr. Chairman, unless you feel confused, the next three items are interrelated?
Yes, can we put them together?
It's almost impossible to, to separate them, but it is distinctive that you must have three different actions on them. Because, and as you know, that's why I asked Sarah to put this in, this is something you remember well. The strip matter property was annexed in two thousand and twelve. It used to be much larger, but it happened to be right next to the I ninety-five Conti Road Cloverleaf. So, twenty-five acres was taken from the strip matters and, but at the same, just before that, the subregion one plan. Chad, oh, did you get it? Good. Okay, sorry. Twenty-five acres was, was taken away. And the State Highway Administration is actually the applicant. So, what we have, let's forget about the resolution because that's the end step to this. So, you have two distinct things. Number one is, you have MXT, which is a relatively new zoning device, where what's in front of you is, you have a very, very strong role in an MXT development conceptually. In fact, it's almost predominant. We're going to be tweaking it back to that the council has involvement as well, obviously for the benefit of the public. But be that as it may, today, Strip Matter has a, a concept plan into you, which is in front of on that slide. Now, what that does, as you can see from the plat I have in front of you, includes both the strip matter property. And here I go, you remember West Side Boulevard, there was a reason why we showed you West Side Boulevard. Is the state, when they took the land, also took the, this was a former board of education property. And strangely enough, despite billions of dollars of development, the school board didn't want this property. And the, the, the state basically took it. They're in the process of, of. and the, the state basically took it. They're in the process of, of negotiating for the Strip Matters to take control of this property. And I'm not getting to, let me save that for the map amendment. So, conceptually, they're looking at something that can only be done, part of it can be done this evening, and part of it could be done maybe in February or March, where the whole plan can come together. The whole plan consists of a five-hundred-acre gated apartment community, a mid-rise hotel, up to two hundred dozens square feet of office and restaurants, and I think it was eighty to a hundred townhouses, I think. The unusual nature is, because I think, I think as I pointed out during West Side Boulevard, there is no other way. You see all these roads going around this parcel, but the, where West Side Boulevard enters is the only absolute way you can get access either of these properties by state standards. I think we covered that before, so I won't, I won't dwell on that. So, as such, the resolution, it's important that we look at MXT developments. So, I'm sorry to flood you with all these findings of fact.
No, you're not, but go ahead.
There are some, some new things that we added into the resolution, because we embraced, and it's, it's a clear story, although it's enough to drive anybody crazy, of all the intricacies that were involved in the development of, of these properties and the progress that has been made in them. Now, having said that, the, the first, the first issue before you is approval of a conceptual plan of MXT. It's important that you understand that your approval is final. The, the council is not, the council is involved to the extent that way you've suggested to include the council is, in the resolution, is to ask you to include them in for now, as we refine this particular zoning mechanism. So, they have a, a, a resolution pending before them that allows them to input into this, and then their, any ideas that they have will be inputted into you before you look at the final plan for the subdivision sometime, whenever that is in the future. Now, dropping back to just the Board of Ed property, that is a traditional, well, it's not traditional, it's a map amendment, and traditionally, map amendments deal by mistake or change. When you use MXT, MXT is an overlay and does not require mistake or change. Though I could go on and add another item, and I'm sure you saw my rant in the staff reports, I won't. To me, it's simple arithmetic. The Prince George's County zoned the property for MXT. It took twenty-five acres away from the Strip Matters, and so it vanished. So there's this twenty-five acre credit, so to speak, out there, where they have analyzed the road systems before they put that zoning category on the property. So, the MXT that will follow that's in front of the Mayor and City Council, which we're asking you to recommend on as well, basically restores that arithmetically. There's no, there's no new net gain in MXT zoning in the subregion. It's, it's, it's a wash. In fact, it's slightly less, because the, the, the Board of Ed property is about nineteen acres, and they took twenty-five acres away from, from the Strip Matter property originally. So, but as such, they're, the timing of those is pending such that the ordinance does not allow you to do a concept for them this evening until such time as the Mayor and City Council grants MXT zoning on the Board of Ed property next door. But I would hasten to add, I, I keep calling it the Board of Ed property, it is now owned by the State Highway Administration. The State Highway Administration is the signatory applicant to the zoning petition. So they in, in fact endorse it. So, I just want to make sure you understand that.
I don't understand. So I, thank you. I, I know the attorney is going to talk, he, he eschews obfuscation. However...
I think you might do a better job than I do.
What are you telling me to do, what are you telling us to do relative to 11, 12, and 13 as we go through this?
Well, on, on 11, we're recommending that you, with the conditions that are in here, which set the stage for a final review later, approve the concept for that portion of this property, which is the Strip Matters. And again, that's why I refer back to B, the blue line lots, because they're, you, the city cannot give approval to development on the Board of Ed property until it's zoned MXT.
So, and...
Feel free.
I'm not sure if it's just semantics or if there is a, a logical order, but it sounds to me what you're saying is, we would need to vote on the MXT condition or concept and the resolution first, because if for any reason we approved 11 and didn't approve 12, 11, you're saying, could not go to the council. Is that correct?
11 has to sit on its own merits, as awkward as it is, because they're only showing us this plan as, it's a bubble plan that they're recommending, but if, if for some reason the Mayor and City Council denied the map amendment on the Board of Ed property, then the Strip Matter property would have to be rebubbled, as it were, to fit within the existing property. This is just the long-term look at what they intend, and they'll be, they'll give you better pictures than, than this to describe what they're doing. It's, it's supposed to be an integrated MXT development, because it has all the, it has recreation, it has, it has restaurants, it has stores, it has lots of apartments, townhouses, and things for people to do, and a hotel that's not budget, which I think is its biggest attribute, but that's a personal bias. So, with that, 11 stands on its own.
Going back to Mitzi's question, do 12 and 13, and then talk about 11, or just listen to everything, and then...
In 12, you're, you were recommending to the Mayor and City Council, who is doing a, a map amendment, so your, your counsel in your motion is suggested to be a recommendation to approve the MXT zone.
Got that.
Okay. Now, having said that, yeah, this is like, I've never, I've never run across anything like that, so I totally appreciate your confusion. It's taken a lot for me to, to process a lot of this too. A lot of the things that we did in the resolution was to make sure that the findings of fact were clear, because it, it's absolutely as complex as it appears. There's, there's just, I'm not going to sit there and, I can't make it simple, because it's just, unfortunately, that is. What I would like to do, though, before we move on, is if, without objection from the chair, have the applicant's legal counsel present, and I think he might do a better job than I can explaining it to you.
He better.
I knew you'd say that.
Yes. You did, you, you meant well, but...
I meant well, but I did as good as I could do.
Some of us aren't as quick as we used to be, so we, we hear slowly.
Speak for yourself.
Yes, I'm speaking for myself and proudly, so. Let's do that then. Let's hear from the applicants.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman and members of the Planning Commission. It's a pleasure to be here this evening. My name is Edward Gibbs, and I am the attorney for the applicants here this evening. And I don't know that I can be clearer than Carl was. I know I can talk longer.
No.
And...
You were clearer last time.
Not necessarily a great thing. You know, I, I know when I first started out in this business, and it's been a long time ago, so I'm not going to tell you exactly how many years ago it was, but my mentor at the time says, look, if, you know, if you have a complicated case, you just keep talking until you start seeing some heads go like this, or eyes closed, and then you can stop. So, I'll try not to do that this evening. Let, let me, let me start out by saying, I'm really, really pleased and proud to be here this evening, representing the clients that I have, Strip Matter Land, represented by Rod, Rob Strip Matter in the second row, also Blake Esrich, who's with us for Strip Matter, and Chad DeBeau of Mill Creek Residential Trust, Limited Liability Company, a highly respected and long in the tooth in terms of experience, developer and, and builder of multifamily residential projects, with, with a lot of projects they've, they've completed in the Washington Metropolitan area, and Chad's going to talk a little bit about that, that as I bring him up. Basically, I'm going to try to provide an introduction, I'm going to try to clarify some of the confusion, because it is, it is a very confusing factual scenario. And, and I tried to do it a little bit when we were here before you, a week and a half or so ago, on the dedication plat for the access road that comes in. So, I'm going to speak a little bit. I want Mr. DeBeau to describe a, a little bit about what his, his company's plans might be. And then, since this is indeed an evidentiary hearing, we have our, our, our expert traffic engineer, Michael Lenhart of Lenhart Traffic, and our, our expert in the field of land planning, Mr. Kevin Foster of the Civil Engineering Firm of Gushick, Will and Weber. And his firm also prepared all of the drawings which have been submitted. They prepared the conceptual site plan, they prepared the dedication plat that you acted on and approved about a week and a half or two weeks ago. So...
Last, last year.
It was last year. All right, so I've got this. There we go, there we go. Okay. All right. The, the Strip Matter family owned approximately sixty-four point eight-seven acres in the northeast quadrant of what is going to become the ninety-five Conti Road intersection or interchange. So, basically, if you take this and you run it down like that, and it came over, down into here, and all that ramp system that you see there, that was once owned by the Strip Matters. Okay? So that was sixty-four point eight-seven acres. The piece that you see at the top, this little odd flag area here, and then coming straight down, over in that area, okay, that was owned by the Prince George's County Board of Education. So, I'm going to say approximately in two thousand and nine, we received inquiries and contact from the Attorney General's Office with the State Highway Administration, and they were telling the Strip Matters, listen, we're going to need some of your land in order to construct the ramp system for the Conti Road interchange. So we went up and we met with them, and we, and we told them, look, we'll, we'll work with you, we'll, we'll work out an arrangement and a settlement, but you need to understand that the acreage that you want to take is, is taking all of our road frontage. You're leaving us with no road frontage whatsoever. So you have two options. You can provide alternate access to us, or you can buy the whole sixty-seven point, or sixty-four point eight-seven acres. That's their responsibility under the law. So obviously, they didn't want to do the, the latter of the two, so they said, let's look for some alternate access. And so, in those early meetings with Mr. Ed Harris of the Attorney General's Office, we discussed alternate options for access, and he seized upon this piece of property that was owned by the Board of Education. And he said, well, if we could acquire that, we could use that to give you access. So, at about the same time, the State Highway Administration was working with the owners of Conterra in order to resolve their eminent domain proceedings as well. Those negotiations culminated in the execution of a three-party agreement in February of two thousand and eleven. That agreement was entered into by and between the State Highway Administration, the owners of Conterra, and Prince George's County, because you may have recalled back in those days, Prince George's County went to the General Assembly, there was more money added into the Consolidated Transportation Fund in order to accomplish this taking. So, buried in that multi-page document was a paragraph that said, Prince George's County will convey the Board of Education property to the State Highway Administration. That conveyance negotiated in that agreement was intended all along to provide the State Highway Administration an opportunity to provide access to the Strip Matters, so that state, the state did not have to buy their entire sixty-four point eight-seven acres. So we fast forward, and the State Highway Administration comes in, and we talk to them again, and we have a series of meetings, and they say to us, okay, well, we're going to give you access through this piece of property that we now own, but we would like for you to work with us further. Rather than just have the State Highway Administration build a road through that property, what we'd like to do is do an acreage swap with you. We're taking twenty-five of your acres down here. This piece of land is nineteen point three-seven acres. We would like to swap those acre for acre. And we said, well, hold on a second. In this nineteen point three-seven acres, there's only about twelve acres that are usable. There's a lot of environmentally sensitive area that can't be disturbed, and of course, everything out in this stem is of no benefit. So, ultimately, the arrangement that was agreed upon with the State Highway Administration is that we would take, value-wise, we would take the whole nineteen point three-seven acres, but the acre-for-acre exchange was valued at about twelve acres. So then, the State Highway Administration had to compensate for thirteen acres. Is that as clear as bud?
No problem, good.
Okay. So, that's where we are. We have, at this point, a negotiated settlement agreement with the State Highway Administration. The State Highway Administration has been, has been one hundred percent on board with everything that has happened here. They have signed every application. They want all of this to happen, because by virtue of taking this acre-for-acre exchange, obviously, they're saving the taxpayers a, a, a huge sum of money. We are taking that land with some degree of vulnerability. We, we've agreed with the State Highway Administration will do that, notwithstanding the fact that we told them, listen, we're swapping twelve acres, but you're not paying us for twelve acres of MXT, and we're getting twelve acres of usable PI, which is really not usable unless we can rezonate. So, the, the concept has been, from day one, that these two pieces of property would be put together and would be developed in a unified fashion. And in particular, it's, it's, it's uniquely appropriate, given the fact that the state had the responsibility and, and the legal responsibility to build us an access, or to provide us with an access, and, and they're doing it through, through land that they're swapping with us as well. So, that's the scenario. As we sit here today, tonight, the only property that, and bear in mind, this, this taking occurred, the state filed a quick take in January of two thousand and twelve. We, we have been divested of ownership, and we have now negotiated a settlement agreement. The finishing touches actually had been applied in the last forty-eight hours. So as it sits today, this is what we own today, and it is zoned MXT. Okay? That was zoned MXT by Prince George's County when it adopted the Subregion One Master Plan and Sectional Map Amendment in June of two thousand and ten, in CR fifty-eight of two thousand and ten. Coincidentally, and not an irrelevancy, is in that same resolution, there was a finding which, which specified that it may, it may be appropriate for this property to be considered, and this is when it was in Prince George's County, to be considered for development in the MXT zone. So there was a recognition even on the part of Prince George's County, Amendment Number twenty-seven of CR fifty-eight of two thousand and ten. So, there was a recognition even then, that the appropriate land use for this property would be MXT, and through consolidation of ownership. That's where we are now. So, we have, we filed a petition to annex the Strip Matter property into the city of Laurel. That has been considered and acted upon. That annexation was effective, effective in the fall of two thousand and twelve. At the same time, the city filed an annexation on the State Highway Administration property with the full knowledge, consent, and support of the State Highway Administration. So now, we have this entire unified parcel within the municipal limits of the city of Laurel, and it's appropriate for us to be here in this application process. The city assigned its MXT zone to the Strip Matter parcel, because that was the, that was the corresponding density and use zone that we had in Prince George's County. The city assigned PI to the Board of Education property, because it was zoned a class, it was previously RR. The county had put it in ROS, which is residential open space, which is a zoning classification, which is assigned to public institutional properties in Prince George's County. So, so the city assigned a corresponding zone with the same type of density, which basically makes it of no use unless it's rezoned. So we're here this evening seeking two things. We are here this evening seeking your recommendation to the mayor and council that rezoning the old Board of Education, the current, now State Highway Administration property, your recommendation that that be rezoned MXT. And you are the approving authority for conceptual site plans. And so we are asking, we have, we have submitted a conceptual site plan that shows how everything works together. But as we sit here this evening, since this thirty-nine acres here is all that is zoned MXT tonight, that is, that is the land area over which you can approve a conceptual site plan. We will have to come back to you for this piece if we are hopefully successful with the mayor and council on having that rezoned. And that hearing is on January twenty-eighth. So, that's sort of the structure of where we are. I think Mr. Brendel made an excellent observation, because, you know, we started out here with a terrific piece of property, sixty-four point eight-seven acres, all zoned MXT in a great location. We lost twenty-five acres of MXT, leaving us with thirty-nine point eight-seven. We're going to acquire nineteen point three-seven, but... We're going to acquire nineteen point three seven, but only ten, let's say twelve, are usable. So you take the twelve and add it to the thirty-nine point eight seven, and so there's still, there's still a net usable deficit of thirteen acres of MXT zone property, which we otherwise would have had but for the actions of the State Highway Administration, which we all recognize are for the greater good of everyone, in terms of the highway improvement that we're all going to be able to enjoy.
Yeah, right.
So that's pretty much, that's pretty much where we are. In terms of your recommendation on the MXT, I have a couple of witnesses who are going to testify, but let me say to you that MXT is a floating zone, as opposed to a Euclidean zone. The Euclidean zone being a zoning classification that you, that every jurisdiction having planning and zoning authority assigns to parcels of property. A floating zone just floats over the zoning district in general, and it's placed down on a particular piece of property in an area that the zoning authority deems to be appropriate if it conforms to the criteria. Now, in a Euclidean zoning case, as Carl mentioned, in order to rezonate, you have to prove either change in the character of the neighborhood or mistake at the time of the last comprehensive rezoning. In a floating zone, you need not prove those elements. Court of Appeals has articulated the test in numerous cases, and what the court has said is that in a floating zone, you have to prove two things. Number one, that the request you are making conforms to the purposes of the zone, so the purposes of the MXT zone as articulated in the zoning ordinance, and that is Article One of your Land Development Code, Section twenty-dash-twelve-point-one, or about eight purposes there. And the second thing you have to prove is that the zoning classification that you're asking for would be compatible with the general area, okay? So those are the, that's our burden, in terms of getting a rezoning to the MXT zone for the Board of Education parcel. Relative to the conceptual site plan, we simply need to prove that we satisfy the elements for approval of a conceptual site plan as set forth in your zoning ordinance, and we're going to, we have addressed those. And I want to say that for both of these things, I know I've, these are in the record, I want to make sure they're formally exhibits in this public hearing. One is a justification statement to rezonate property, the Board of Ed piece, and the other is justification statement for conceptual site plan approval. I want to make sure these are deemed to be affirmative elements in the proof of our case, and so I want to introduce these. Just ever so briefly, before I turn this over to my witnesses, the way this plan is laid out, we have the requisite elements of a mix of uses required for MXT. This salmon color in the front is retail commercial, and we've oriented that so as to be out front by the street frontage. We wouldn't want to put that in the rear and residential up front, because we wouldn't want visitors to the site to come in and have to drive right through the residential component in order to get to the retail. So we put that out by the street. The purple triangular piece that you have here is a hotel, which would not exceed one hundred and fifty rooms. It's likely to be four floors, four stories in height. It's situated very specifically at the highest elevation point on the property in order to enjoy the visibility that the new interchange with I ninety-five will afford. To the rear, this tan area is multifamily residential uses, and we are proposing, at this point, five hundred, a maximum of five hundred multifamily uses. While it is not before you tonight, we have this overall coordinated plan, that green is proposed to be eighty townhomes, and this area over here beneath the access road is also proposed to be retail commercial. The blue area here is going to be a publicly dedicated road, that's the plat of dedication that you approved two weeks ago. And again, that plat was, that application for that plat dedication was signed by the State Highway Administration. That will be, we have an opportunity to do something really special here. We're going to have four lanes, two lanes in each direction, divided by a median, and we certainly plan to have substantial landscaping with a monumental entrance feature out front. The project, of course, will be known as West Side. In the, in the MXT zone, your base FAR, or floor area ratio, is allowed to be zero point two, zero point two floor area ratio. We have given the floor area ratio for our entire development, even though only this is going to be before you in terms of approval, and our floor area ratio for the project is zero point four five two. We are above the zero point two zero. However, in your ordinance, there are certain things that provide density bonus increments. And in the MXT zone, if you provide twenty or more residential units, you get a density bonus of one point zero FAR. So without anything other than the residential, we're entitled to an FAR of one point two, and we're at zero point four five two. So we're at less than half of what our permissible FAR is. With that being said, I want to place into evidence the resumes of Mr. Michael Lenhart and Mr. Kevin Foster. They're both going to testify. They have been accepted as expert witnesses in, before numerous bodies in Prince George's County and elsewhere in the state of Maryland, and I would hope that you would be able to accord them the, their testimony, the level of expertise which they enjoy. I'd like to have these entered as well. Before I introduce Mr. Lenhart, I want to tell you what we did with his traffic study. Because one of the criteria for the approval of a conceptual site plan is that you must show that transportation routes which are existing will be provided by the applicant or which are one hundred percent funded will be adequate to carry the traffic, will not exceed the capacity of the roads. And so we met with your Department of Public Works and with Mr. Brendel, and we scoped a traffic study. The study was prepared in strict conformance with the scoping agreement. Mr. Lenhart analyzed six intersections. He included, he included a growth factor, he included, of course, the trips that would be generated as a result of this project, and all six of those intersections operate at Level of Service D or better, thus no adverse traffic impact. His first report was prepared when the development scenario that was envisioned had, oh, that There we, thank you. We had proposed a maximum of seven hundred and fifty residential units, so we scaled that back to five hundred, and then the overall commercial retail was at a hundred and fifty, and we've increased that to two hundred as a result of conversations with the city. So he did an updated report that corrected the numbers to be five hundred and two hundred thousand square feet of retail. The hotel didn't change, nor did the, nor did the townhomes. Two other things he did. Directly across Van Dusen, there was a project known as Anderson's Corner that has a conceptual approval, three hundred and fifty multifamily units, and a very small component of retail commercial. It's really little more than a gas station and a convenience store, five thousand square feet. So Mr. Lenhart did an addendum to include that. You know, we didn't know whether we had to, because it wasn't part of our scope, but we went ahead and included that. And under all of the same scenarios, the intersections continue, the six critical intersections we had to look at to operate Level Service D or better. And then we, then we took one final step, and that was, the Park and Planning Commission made some comments about at least looking at some short-term impact of Conterra. And now, you know, Conterra is obviously a massive, massive project, which has been planned for many years. It's recently received development approvals from Prince George's County. Now, Conterra has approved development, but it also has required transportation improvements that must be funded before they can obtain permits. And so consequently, what we did to take a look at that was we, Mr. Lenhart also did an addendum that included fifty percent of the Conterra development, and he also assumed the improvements that went along with that development, because those improvements have to be funded before the permits can be issued pursuant to their approvals. And in doing that, all the intersections continued to operate at Level of Service D or better. Those last two addenda were not required. Out of an abundance of caution, I had Mr. Lenhart do them, so that we could put them in the record, and he has those this evening. So I did see a couple of heads nodding affirmatively, and so I think it's time for me to stop. And so I'm going to turn this over at this point to Mr. Lenhart and ask him to come up and put into evidence the documents he has. Thank you.
Thank you, Ed. For the record, Mike Lenhart with Lenhart Traffic Consulting. I'm not going to go into too many details. Mr. Gibbs has kind of summarized my studies pretty good detail. I will say that the study intersections that we looked at, we looked at both of the interchange ramps and intersections on I ninety-five at New Conti Road Interchange. We looked at, so we looked at the I ninety-five ramps to and from northbound at New Conti Road, and then on this side is the interchange ramps to and from southbound. We looked at the intersection of New Conti Road at Van Dusen Road, this intersection. We looked at the site access point in the scenarios that Mr. Gibbs described with and without Anderson's Corner on the east side of that intersection. We looked at, if you go further north on Van Dusen, the intersection of Conti Road, and then if you go further north still on Van Dusen, the intersection of Cherry Lane. Those were all scoped out with the City of Laurel Department of Public Works. That study was submitted in the fall of two thousand twelve, reviewed and approved by the city. We, in the update that Mr. Gibbs described, where the land use has changed, originally it was seven hundred and fifty multifamily units and a hundred and fifty thousand square feet of retail. That's changed to five hundred multifamily units, which reduced slightly, and the retail increased to two hundred thousand. All in all, the traffic didn't change substantially, because we reduced one a little bit, and we increased the other a little bit. Those findings in our updated report, the results did not change, intersections still all pass, Level of Service D or better. And that kind of covers everything. I do have copies here that have any, I've got four.
Could you just, if you could explain from the beginning, you have the report, but just tell us.
Sure, there are, there are three documents in this report. One is the updated traffic impact study dated January fourteenth, two thousand thirteen. The second document is an addendum number one to that traffic impact study, which includes the traffic generated by Anderson Corner. And then the third document is addendum number two to the traffic impact study, which includes Anderson Corner, and it includes Conterra, the fifty percent buildout of Conterra. And I should say that that fifty percent buildout level was not something that we picked at random, that was something that Park and Planning suggested based on DSP zero-eight-zero-one-one for Conterra, which established a certain amount of trips, which is roughly fifty percent of their approved buildout. Yes, I will. I'll send that to you tomorrow morning. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Lenhart. I'd like to ask Mr. Chad DeBeau to come up and just explain a little bit about what his project will include.
Well, good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the Planning Commission. My name is Chad DeBeau, I'm with Mill Creek Residential. I believe my presentation is made easy and contrast to Mr. Gibbs' presentation and Mike Lenhart's. I simply want to, once again, I've been before you before, and thank you, I'm very proud to be a part of this application. Our company, while the name of our company is not familiar, we are the formal development and construction partners with Tramco Residential, which was, for thirty-five years, a very active Class A apartment community developer across the country. Our office has been open for over, well over fifteen years out of Rockville, Maryland, and by evidence of this slide, what's a, there we go. We have been active over that fifteen-plus-year period in developing over four thousand apartment units, again, a Class A level apartment units across the metro area, and as you can tell, across many municipalities. And so this being our first in the City of Laurel, it does give us great pleasure to be before you tonight and the opportunity to work with you in the future on this application. As we have, when working with the city and Mr. Carl Brendel and the mayor, we then went through an array of projects that we've been working on locally, some of them more recent, when in fact, the mayor and had also visited to see. This one is in Arlington County. I'm going to move through these quickly, so at any time, if you have any questions, please feel free to do so. This one is in the City of Alexandria, just recently completed, Reston Town Center. We were a very large developer in that development as a whole. Again, in Centerville, Virginia, Lexan Faircrest. Again, another project in City of Alexandria. Herndon, Virginia, actively building this project now currently, and this is in Washington, DC, in the Noma Submarket project. In Fairfax County, this is a very large project, actually joint development with the Metro Authority for residential, retail, and public facilities for Metro. Another project in Ashburn, Virginia, Herndon, Virginia. The photos I wanted to present tonight, so obviously, I didn't present every single project, but the point of it is just to show how much development we've been working on and how excited we are to work on a similar class of project in the City of Laurel. The project I have here before you is not too dissimilar. Obviously, we do not have any renderings prepared for this project specifically, but I did want to note these pictures on a project we recently completed, and I anticipate similar detail and concentration on landscaping, site amenities should be available on this project. What's that? Yeah, minus the fact that this is in Florida. But the similar architecture at a level, we anticipate studios, one bedrooms, two bedrooms, and three bedrooms. The project would be surface parked, however, very similar to this project, it'd be integral structured parking within the first level, available for all residents to use on a designated basis. But I think the caliber of this project, the attention of landscaping that we put on the property, both from the entranceway to the amenities, is very similar to what I would expect to be working before this Planning Commissioner in the future, and we didn't go into the detailed site plan process. So if you have any questions, feel free to ask, but our company, myself, look very much forward to working with you in the future.
Thank you.
I'd like to have Mr. Kevin Foster come up now.
Mr. Chairman, members of the commission, thank you for having us tonight. You'll have to pardon my voice a little bit, I seem like everybody else, I'm catching a part of what's going around these days. As, as Mr. Gibbs pointed out, again, my name is Kevin Foster, I'm a land planner with Good Chick Little and Weber, and my role in this project is really from the planning, planning aspects, and as Mr. Gibbs pointed out, and as he put into the record, the And as Mr. Gibbs pointed out and as he put into the record, the pretty full justification statements for both the zoning case and the CSP. I'm really here to look at the details, the findings and the description of the, both the zoning case that is before you for the previous school board parcel and also the CSP that is before you for the strip matter parcel. And as Mr. Gibbs pointed out, the zoning case, which I would talk about briefly to begin with, is MXT zone on the school board parcel. And that is a floating zone. So there are a number of findings that have to be made in order for that case. But before you look at the findings, one of the issues that we look at when it comes to planning and finding the appropriateness of a parcel is looking at a general neighborhood or a general area that we're analyzing for the zoning classification. And in this case, we looked at a general neighborhood that was basically on the north and the west side, basically I-95, Van Dusen and Virginia Manor Road on the east side. And the south side, we really view the neighborhood as probably ending at the Pepco right of way, which runs through Conterra. So you have this rectangular kind of neighborhood that starts really at the south of Conterra and moves up into the City of Laurel, up almost to 198. And when looking at that area, you're looking at a very diverse development area. There's obviously the existing hospital, there's single-family detached neighborhoods, there are existing townhouse neighborhoods. The Anderson's Corner parcel directly across the street, which is going to be a very similar multifamily product. And then you look at the very large Conterra project to the south, which has a tremendous amount of office, retail and also residential. Looking at it as a whole and this specific location, right at a major intersection, a major hub, as you come off of 95, it seems that this is a very appropriate place for MXT zone, mixed-use transportation oriented zone. So it seems a very appropriate place for that zoning classification. And as the strip matter piece was previously in Prince George's County, the sub-region one master plan also found that to be the case, that this was an appropriate location for MXT zone. As part of the MXT zoning, there are a number of findings that have to be made. And one of those is that the MXT zone for this parcel, for the school board parcel, meets the purpose clauses of the MXT zone within the City of Laurel. And there are a number of those purposes. They're outlined in the statement of justification. I was planning on going through a few of those if we have time. There are probably seven or eight of these purposes. One, to promote the orderly development and redevelopment land in the vicinity of major intersection, major transits up. So that the areas will enhance the economic status of the county and provide expanding source of desirable employment and living opportunities. Well, obviously, this parcel is a very key parcel right at a major interchange. It's going to provide the opportunity for multiple housing types. We're envisioning, excuse me, multifamily housing of multiple sizes, of one bedrooms, two bedrooms, three bedrooms. We're also looking at single-family attached housing, townhouses. So we're providing multiple housing types, also a really desirable mix of commercial uses, up to 200,000 square feet of commercial is envisioned, and also a hotel of up to 150,000 square feet. So I think it really meets that section of the code. Well, I would like to adopt all of the, I realize time is of the essence tonight, but I would like to adopt all of the findings that were outlined in the statement of justification as part of my testimony for the rezoning case. And you can read those that were put into the record as part of the statement of justification. I would also like to briefly touch on the CSP rezoning, the CSP, excuse me, approval that is before you tonight. And there are, again, findings that have to be made as part of that conceptual site plan. And that the CSP meets the requirements of the zoning code. There was one, the first section of the requirements of the zoning code, section 20-12.1, gives a description of what should be included in a CSP. And one of those elements was a general description of the pedestrian system proposed. And I would like to introduce into the record a pedestrian system plan that is superimposed on top of the CSP. That pedestrian system we envision is a very complex and integrated pedestrian system, including sidewalks, paths, open spaces and landscaping that will allow access to the site along the public road, which is West Side Boulevard that I think you previously seen. And then will be incorporated into the site to provide a really integrated pedestrian system for the West Side Development. The proposed floor area ratios, Mr. Gibbs has already gone into, along with the ranges and square footages of development. And he also went into the incentives used to allow increased densities. And since we are providing residential, we are allowed an increased bonus of one FAR. And I think Mr. Gibbs already went over all of that. All of the, all of those findings are also outlined in the statement of justification for the conceptual site plan. And I would like to adopt those as part of my testimony here tonight. The other major section of, or approval that when you're looking at a conceptual site plan is compliance with the City of Laurel Master Plan. And there are a number of sections in the master plan which I think are very relevant for this CSP. There are a number of goals, such as land use goals on page 49, that provide quality of living and working environment through effective utilization of implement, utilization and implementation of land use practices. I think you will see that the conceptual site plan that we're proposing is providing a very complex and thoughtful group of uses here that are, as we move through the project with conceptual site plan tonight, this is just the first step. Obviously, we will have a final site plan that'll detail how all of these elements will be brought together. But we really anticipate that this is going to be a high-quality and vibrant 24-hour neighborhood that will become a very valued asset to the City of Laurel. There are a number of other sections of the master plan that were listed in the statement of justification. And I would also like to adopt those as part of my testimony here tonight. If you have any further questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Thank you very much. We're all still awake.
I have questions for him.
That's an achievement in and of itself. Mr. Strip Matters here, and he could say something if needed, but you know, like Supreme Court Justice Thomas. Mr. Strip Matters hasn't said anything in a hearing since 2006. So I don't think he should break his silence. Although I did hear that Justice Thomas did crack a joke during an argument earlier this week. So that was, that was newsmaking according to the Washington media. But in any event, we appreciate your patience. And this is an evidentiary hearing, so we did have a responsibility to create a record. And that's what we tried to do. We do believe, you know, earnestly, that the evidence in this record overwhelmingly supports a finding, that we meet all the criteria in your ordinance for the approval of a conceptual site plan. And we would respectfully request you to approve this plan, at least the portion, the portion that's MXT. And also that we have met the criteria for rezoning. And we would, again, respectfully request that you recommend to the mayor and council that the Board of Ed piece, the SHA parcel, so to speak, which is soon to be the strip matter parcel, be rezoned to MXT so that we can proceed with this univide development. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I just, I wanted to ask, the staff report that was prepared for the commission included five conditions on the approval of the MAP amendment and five conditions on the MXT conceptual plan 830. Is the applicant, has the applicant reviewed all of those and is okay with those if the motion included those recommendations? I just wasn't sure whether there are any conditions.
Yes, please forgive me. We did review those and we have no objection to those conditions. And thank you very much for asking.
And much of the, just so you understand the comprehensive nature of this, most of the applicant's statement of justification, which is the result of much of the testimony this evening, was folded into the resolution if you favor it. That way you have the biggest record I have ever seen in a resolution for approval by the commission.
Mr. Chairman, if I could just say that the applicant was before the mayor and city council at our work session last week. And while I certainly can't speak for how the mayor and city council will vote on this action, I can say that it seemed that this was received favorably by the mayor and council. So if that helps in any way.
I might add that it was a very nice presentation on the other night. That's why I don't have any questions. Carl answered them all the other night. How often does that happen? Thank you, John.
I commend you, Mr. Gibbs, for making things clearer. But it's still, the whole thing is mind-boggling. And I still can't figure it out.
But there's no, it doesn't get any better. That's it.
It's not age, it's not age, it's complexity.
If I also may add to something that Council President Smalls said as well, in our communications with the county, the Park and Planning Commission did react to the MAP amendment. And they made comments, again, basically concerned why we didn't include all of the Conterra traffic assumptions. So the mayor and city council, I'll be writing the letter on their behalf, are asking the Park and Planning to come and brief the city. So we may learn of the agreement at which we were not part of, and we're not, you know, we're not part of Conterra. But this is a very complex, adequate public facilities arrangement with Prince George's County, the state of Maryland and the applicant. And we have great respect for that. But we can't know about it from being next door unless we're briefed on it. So we will let you know when that gentleman comes to the Park and Planning Commission and be very happy to have a meeting involving the commission as well on his briefing to us. So that we'll all understand the full nature of our next-door neighbor.
Okay, now, the question is, we're talking now about 11.
Number 11.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, ma'am.
If we're ready, I move the adoption of MAP amendment number 829, ordinance number 1765. Former Prince George's County Board of Education property Van Dusen Road, West Side Development, filed by Strip Matter Land LLC for recommendation to the mayor and city council to include the five conditions included in the staff report.
Mrs. Bateman?
Yes.
Mr. Welford?
Yes.
Mr. Kish?
Yes.
Mrs. Holland?
Yes.
Chairman Wilford?
Yes.
Motion carries.
And now we're dealing with item 12. And 13. It goes all the way to 15, okay.
If I can propose something. When a lot of these things were first written, we discovered that in the process that you are the final body in this. So in other words, the second action was actually designed for you to have an advisory opinion on the MXT concept, when in fact, the resolution 1303 PC actually covers your action completely. I think the other action is now unnecessary.
The revogue.
Because the resolution is the final action of the Planning Commission. The Planning Commission has, the only thing that we're recommending that you, there is a separate amendment by the mayor and city council that you invite the mayor and city council in their hearings on the 28th, that they will have discussions. And also, we're asking that you invite their opinion into the, to the plans as they develop throughout the process. Because again, in an MXT, you're the pivotal body. I think I made things worse.
I think you did.
Yeah, so you're saying 830 does not need a motion, which includes recommendations from staff?
830 is, hold on a second.
830 is number 12, which is included in the staff report.
What you're saying, 13?
But you're saying 13 supersedes? It just means that 830 would never have been acted on?
Right, again, your, that one unfortunately was designed that you would defer to the, that's as if you were advisory to the mayor and city council. We're actually, if you don't mind, I'm going to retract that.
Okay.
Because the resolution of approval actually is the exhibit, is the power of the commission. It is, but the resolution is not in front of the council. I mean, the conceptual plan is not legally in front of the council. That's why we're asking you to place it in front of the council. This is a whole new area.
Yes, if I might, I don't know if it's inappropriate for me to speak again.
More than appropriate.
The way your ordinance is structured, the Planning Commission approves conceptual site plans. And so you would not be enacting an ordinance or a resolution recommending approval? I think that the ordinance that Mr. Brendel's referring to, which is Resolution 1303-PC, is in fact, an ordinance approving. But I also think that, I would think probably the general procedure would be, you would take, if it were your inclination, to approve the conceptual site plan. You'd take a vote to approve the conceptual site plan with the five conditions, and then you'd take a second vote to enact the resolution. I think that's the way it should go.
Yeah, that way, because I mean, I think it's everybody's intent that they want the input of the mayor and city council and having two together. It is not, it's not the traditional way we usually do things to have that. But in this particular case, it binds the council to the action, that safe to zone.
So we can say what he said.
Right, do both if you would.
Two separate votes then.
We ready? Tending a motion?
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, ma'am.
I move for mixed-use, approval of mixed-use transit-oriented development, MXT conceptual plan number 830, ordinance number 1764, West Side Development, Van Dusen Road, filed by Strip Matter Land LLC and MCRT Investments LLC, including the five conditions outlined in the staff report for approval.
Mr. Kish, second.
Mrs. Bateman?
Yes.
Mr. Kish?
Yes.
Mr. Welford?
Yes.
Mrs. Holland?
Yes.
Chairman Wilford?
Of course, yes.
Motion carries.
To conclude this matter, I would like to move action on resolution number 1303 PC.
Mrs. Bateman?
Yes.
Mr. Kish?
Yes.
Mr. Welford?
Yes.
Mrs. Holland?
Yes.
Chairman Wilford?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you very much. You deserve a bonus.
Please don't.
Thomas.
He's ready to speak.
He takes mud and makes it clear.
By, by state statute, we can only work by the hour.
Thank you.
That concludes it for the evening, doesn't it?
Is there any other business to bring before this body?
Oh, yes, we're not done yet.
Oh, I thought we were finished.
What? I don't have anymore?
Well, we're sixteen.
You're at the train station yet?
Oh.
Remember that tidal wave I told you about last fall?
Yeah, 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 yeah.
This is it.
Damn.
That thing where they, that they carried off with? Is it up there?
Seventeen, we're telling them, I'm appearing on the.
Actually, yeah, can you?
Train station complex.
You familiar?
West Side.
X that out too. There we go.
Okay.
And full screen it.
There it is.
Thank you.
I think I'm going to retire.
Mr. Chairman, in the interest of time, the applicant is going to do most of the pretty pictures. I did this for the mayor and city council. This is a project you're, it seems like it's been here forever, but it's never really been before you per se. But this, this is a joint venture between Patriot Realty and the Maryland Department of Transportation. Both parties are present in the room this evening to answer any questions you may have. This is part of the state's TOD program to facilitate redevelopment on parcels. This is a, one of the state's big sites, it is a Governor Smart site, it is a, a TOD site designated by, it's also the center of our Braxton. Having said that, involves the, the development of a complex on the existing train station and it also involves the development of a multi-level parking garage on the other side of the tracks. So the commuters on the east of the tracks, actually, I call it next to Donnie Danneman's auto service, you know, the garage will be built there.
For my time.
Yeah, sorry. And then this complex will be built almost entirely on top of the existing parking lot. There's a number of, of conditions that we're recommending obviously to this, the least of which is like, tell us what you're going to do with all the cars that park on this lot while you're building that lot, but they do have to build the parking garage first, so we're assuming that will open its entirety. I'm going to let them elaborate on that and not go into that this evening. There's been a great deal of discussions and they brought their traffic expert with them, because the only thing that all, is like, we had concerns and still have concerns is, you're changing the dynamic of people, most of which park on this side, going to a garage on the other side, and the answer is, what happens really in the PM rush? Like when people are coming in there, because as we know, this place is notorious for very short-term congestion. The rest of the time, it's relatively fine. So we've been discussing a number of ways, some of which are included in our staff recommendation to you, one of which is using electronic system to, to restrict egress from the garage during PM peak hour periods when a train comes in, because I can't imagine getting into the line of cars, going in the under the pass and trying to leave towards Howard County Route One when a train comes in, I just can't imagine that. It's the ultimate don't block the box kind of scenario in there, but he, he's going to comment more on that about the distribution of traffic throughout this. We had testimony last night that we're looking into from the, the neighbors across the street, the cocoons about, apparently GPS systems are directing tractor trailers, not meant for this area, and they, they drive into the underpass and have to back out again, so we're going to take a look at that. A number of things that, signage restrictions and things like that that we need to look at. But be that as it may, the, the applicant is proposing a, a building of multifloors. The, the floors in, facing Main Street are the city, the area of the commercial, they're proposing about ten thousand square feet of commercial and a four-story building, and as you see, and I'll have them show it to you, not me, a six-story building that rings a central courtyard. So there are two levels of parking inside this building and it's a requirement, which is mild, ball and chain is, we're asking that you require the applicant to, to fund the uplighting of the train station and make sure that the lighting is perpetually paid for by them. The, the, the MTA won't, will, will think of a hundred reasons why not to do it if it doesn't have a funding source to do it, but I can't imagine anything more spectacular than this building at night and then having the city's one, two, one of the two remaining national historic registered properties lit at night, I think it'd be outstanding that way. So anyway, with that, I'll, I'll keep quiet for now in the interest of time and if you'd like to hear from the applicant.
Certainly would. Please.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the commission. For the record, my name is Bill Ship, I'm with the law firm of O'Malley Miles and Island at Gilmore, we are located in Calverton. Here tonight on behalf of the applicant to talk about what we think is a very exciting proposal for one hundred Main Street. This process, and I call it a process because as you know, in your overlay district, that it really is a negotiated process between, or together with the city, to come up with a unique proposal for redevelopment within your designated redevelopment areas. We are in the R-oh-three redevelopment area and we are probably the most unique parcel because it is the mark station that is owned by the state and we do have representatives of MDOT, Maryland Department of Transportation. We have Adella Adams with us tonight and Namisha Sharma, who's here. I also have with the applicant developer, Leith Wayne and Jerry Richardi, and our traffic expert, our traffic engineer, Wes Guckert, and our architect planning firm, Lee Driscoll with Hord Copeland, they've appeared before you many times, they're here to really do the bulk of the presentation. I simply want to introduce the project, which you're all very familiar with, but to say that we agree with the analysis that was done by Mr. Brendel in his staff report, which you have, which talks about the compliance with each of the purposes and intents of the overlay zone. But if you distill that down, what it's really talking about is focusing on transit-oriented development, focusing on redevelopment, not just of a parcel, but redevelopment that might catalyze future redevelopment in the overlay district, and then coming up with a unique proposal that I would say adds to the fabric of the city. And what you have right now is a mark station, which is a focal point and a very important functioning transit station within the city, but when you have a, a surface parking lot associated with that use, it's really separated from the city in terms of integrating any kind of use and interaction between folks other than the commuters getting in their cars. And what this proposal is trying to do and trying to accomplish is to put a piece of the puzzle together in your overlay district that will provide some on-the-street activity right at the station, where there'll be residences, there'll be retail, and then there'll be parking related to the residential and parking replaced for the commuters. It won't be mixed up and, and overlapping, so there won't be confusion there. Obviously, the state is very diligent in particular about making sure that their existing parking for their commuters is replaced in adequate fashion, and as you heard Carl describe, we are required to do that parking replacement first, so there won't be one of these interim terrible problems where we've taken away all the parking and people are waiting for us to finish and, and until they can find a place to park just to get on the commuter train. We don't want to disrupt the commuter use, we don't want to disrupt the city any more than has to happen during a construction process, and then we want to come out of the ground and to finish with a great product that the city can be proud of and that my client can be proud of. I would say that we are in agreement with the recommendations and findings of your staff in their staff report. I would like to make one suggestion of a clarification if the commission is inclined to adopt the recommendations, and we certainly request and hope that you will be, but as Carl mentioned, there is a condition number two, which deals with electronic system for directional arrows to address this traffic control situation. We are going to be working through that process into the final development plan and I would simply request that after the words, provide an electronic system of directional arrow, arrows that we add or other control measures, because I don't know at this moment whether it's going to be an electronic directional arrow or some kind of gate control of traffic to make sure that cars don't come out one exit at the wrong time. We'll be working with your staff and, and back in front of you with whatever that ends up being, but I didn't want to necessarily rule out other traffic control measures that might be more effective in the design process, and so I just wanted to, to make that one suggestion and we would request consideration of that. With that, my portion of the presentation is, again, is to, to make the point that we agree with the findings in your staff report regarding compliance with the intent of the overlay zone, to make sure that we've put on record that we feel we are in compliance with your ordinance and the findings and purposes of that ordinance. I would like to call up Lee Driscoll to run you through the presentation slides of the project and just so you know where we go from there, I know it's getting late, but after his presentation, we're going to have Wes Guckert come up and talk to you about the circulation with the parking and the relocation and kind of the, the sequencing of that process so that you can get an update and hopefully a comfort level that this is being thought through, and certainly if the folks from MDOT want to add to any part of this presentation, we're welcoming their input as well.
Okay, we get time and a half for overtime.
Okay. At this point, I'm going to ask Lee to come up and run us through the slides.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman and members of the planning commission, thank you for having me. I'm Lee Driscoll, the architectural firm, Hord Copeland &amp; Mac, Baltimore, Maryland. This evening, what I'll do is I'll run through kind of the conceptual idea, it'll give you a lot more of a visual in your mind of how this building will work on the site and what it will do hopefully for the street and for the rest of Laurel. And certainly, I hope it, it's an exciting project for us to be working on. Our office does a lot of these urban infill projects and this one in having the mark station there and having the city this close to DC, and the potential here is, we find, phenomenal for this site. So, oh, I got the pointer here too. What I'll do is I'll run you through the slides, this is kind of the, we all know the famous Francis Baldwin train station, which is also a bonus for us to have down the street. Being an architect, he's one of my favorite architects, certainly of train stations. This is the site, as you can see, we have really two sites to look at. This is the existing footprint of the parking lot, here's the train station right here, and here's the other site where we're looking to put a, a garage on. The site, this project will be phased, as you've heard from Bill, the first site will be the garage site and the plan for that site, which is this one here, is to replace one-for-one, all the spaces that are on this site and this site, and also the site has the potential for future growth if necessary for parking. This, again, this is the site that we're putting our building on and that, this is again, just another look at it. Us architects, we like to take lots of pictures. This is kind of what's around, as you can see right now, this is sort of what you look at when you come down Main Street, it's, it's not something that I would like to have right next to this famous building. But, and we think that because of this, it's, it sits a lot of times, I've been over there taking pictures on a number of occasions and that lot is empty a lot. So for best and highest use, it's probably not, here's again, as you can see, this is what you see today at the end of Main Street, so it doesn't celebrate Main Street in any way, it certainly doesn't celebrate the train station, it facilitates the use of the train station. Here's looking down the street, what we kind of have, the idea at night is, is that we would have the retail, which would be active, and we would uplight, we are proposing that you uplight the train station to make it more of a focal point at the end of, of Main Street, as Bill said, and make it really celebrate the idea of, of public architecture and certainly public historic architecture. This is a breakdown of the site, as you can see, here's the garage that is across the track, here's the little underpass right here that we were talking about where the trucks are having difficulty. The building is, as you can see right here, it's a combination of about ten thousand square foot of retail space on the first level with parking sharing that level, and then you spiral down for another level of parking to give us about three hundred and thirty spaces inside that garage on two levels. Above that, we have three and five stories of housing on top of that, as you can see, the, the space in the middle is a courtyard for the people, the, the roughly three hundred and ten units that we're going to have in here, the units, as you can see, here's kind of the makeup to the units. We have ones, we have some efficiencies, we're trying to meet the market of what we think is going to be there and be interested in a site like this. We also like the idea that adding these people to the mix of Main Street will help the businesses on that street and certainly bring Main Street back to the Main Street, the walkable community idea, the idea that these people are walking out into community, people are walking by this, to really, to give it, to, to make it active and follow some of the ideas that Carl and the planning department embrace. This is sort of looking, a, a conceptual elevation of looking down, Main Street is right here, here's Francis Baldwin Station, here's that first level of retail, in this level, we would have some inline offices on the lower level, which have backs to the garage that's behind them, the garage is behind this level and one level down here. Looking at the street, we, we broke the mass of the building down as a recommendation from the planning department to, to be more in scale with this building, which sits up, as you know, it sits up high, so to try to pick the top of that building and then cap this part of, of the project, bring its scale and height down, and then we step back up to get the number of units that we think are, are necessary for the site. Working on right now, again, this is conceptual, so we're still talking about what the materials are going to be, how much of it and where it's going to be, but this kind of gives you an idea. There's an entry point here, and when I go back, let me just go back to the plan, there's a couple of entry points, there's a residential entry point here, one of the main entry points is, this is a walking residential entry point, and so is one here. We have drive entry points from around the site, we have an entry here, and we have an entry into the garage here, and we'll have a right out only at this point right here. I mean, right in only, sorry, right in only, which is a little bit to the right over here, you wouldn't see it in this, in this elevation in that sketch. This is another, this is the same sketch that I took and played with and did all that fancy light work that you saw on the first slide, this gives you what it looks like in the daytime. This is kind of a cross-section of the building showing the amenity space for the people who live in the building, this is not a public amenity, this is for the building, there's a potential for a pool in it, we'll have outdoor space, the building itself will have a community room, it'll have room for business. What we're seeing in the industry right now is billiard rooms and things like that with the demographics that are, that are populating these buildings, so we'll follow the market closely and look at what, what is, is working and put those as public spaces for the residents in the building, and you can see, these are just typical residential floors. And this is how the garage works, here's the, here's kind of the retail space here, here's where that building steps down, here's Main Street, so we have that level garage and we're going to go down a level to get the required spaces for this building. This is just the parking lane, as you can see, here's that entry point I was talking about, here's an entry point and here's, entry point here, here's kind of the first level. Here's that wrapper on, on Route One that'll activate that street, that will also have some potential for businesses and small, small business and things like that, and here's the retail we were talking about, here's that residential lobby at the lower level, and then there's the other one at the, this is the lowest level of parking, as you see, it kind of spirals down into the ground. Here's just a blow-up of that slide you saw earlier showing the, the courtyard, the courtyard will have a number of access points, but here, here's also an entry and here's also a entry, so these people could leave the building and get up to Main Street and enjoy the businesses that are up there. It's just as we move up through the building, and this is the, kind of a sketch of what the garage across the street will look like, and we're picking up on some of the brick of, of maybe the train station, but we'll be working through that as we move through this. And I will.
Excuse me, on the, on the Lafayette Avenue side where the parking garage, is there anything planned to get from the marks? Right now, it's, you go down to, you go down a couple steps and then you cross at street level, whereas where the parking garage is, you're. Whereas where the parking garage is, you're not crossing a street. When you get off the Mark train, you're right in the parking lot. So, is there anything planned?
To go across the street to the new garage?
To get across the street to get to the new garage, or is that still going to be coming down?
We're looking into that right now. There is the possibility that you could go across the street. You see these people going across the street here, and we could have a ramp and some stairs up to the platform. That's something that we're just looking at at this point. We haven't really gotten into in great detail with Carl.
Yeah, one of the things that Mr. Adams and I, as economists, love, in many early discussions, in fact, the city changed its laws to allow this commission to grant air rights for a potential area walkway to cover.
Agreed.
Then we discovered the CSX is less than happy about people walking across the tracks because most of them are walking against oncoming northbound freight and passenger traffic. They don't like that, is what we were told.
Yeah, I was just thinking, right now, when you get off the train, you're not crossing a street to get to parking. But this now, everyone getting off of the train is...
The people in the garage.
Is now, yeah.
I don't think it's a dead issue yet, but it's just, like I said, if there, I wish there was another way. Thank God, we probably doubt it, but we were, at least there is a pedestrian way that's relatively safe to go underneath the tracks.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
So, that is about it for me, unless you have some questions for me.
Any questions?
Then I would...
Who's going to control the, I guess, the entry and the exit points for the garage? I mean, I guess, the question and the concern, I guess, that I have is, you have all these people coming in, and this is just replacing all of the front parking. Is it replacing the back overflow parking area as well?
One-for-one for the front and the back.
For the front and the back?
That's correct.
Okay, but sometimes, because I used to catch the train going into DC, and so sometimes both of those areas can be full.
Right.
So, is there, you know, I mean, we already have a very narrow space right there. So, with the bridge and the two lanes and just the area to get across the street, I'm wondering if, I mean, how will people know if, I guess they won't, if that garage is full? And then we'll have cars just kind of circulating, trying to figure out, oh, the parking garage is full, and now I need to go try to exit and do something else. So, I guess that should all be considered as part of the whole traffic.
People know that, but there still is, there are dollars that the parking opportunities that the police and the mayor provides will not be diminished by this, at least not at this time. This is, I don't know if you call it phase one, but I mean, there's still other parking opportunities and that. There's other stations and then obviously this big development, it's north and south here that are, that parking opportunities. And the one thing we don't know, and I won't get into this, is the provision of all the TODs on this line. Many people who use this station like to do it because they feel safer there in the city, and the city police are very mindful, they're also mindful of flooding. But, having other opportunities that may have a line, they may redirect. We don't know any of that until, we have met with MTA about, they've done a study of how people get to the station and where they're coming from. It's really quite interesting.
Well, thank you for listening. If there's no other questions, I'll, maybe Wes can answer these questions for you. Wes Guckert.
Mr. Chairman, please, I do have a couple of really general questions.
Sure.
On one or two of the slides you presented early in your presentation, there were some photographs you took of Route 1. And there, one of the things that just leaps off of those photographs are the overhead wires, utility wires. Can you tell us just a little bit about what your plan is regarding any utilities in the project area?
Well, I would have to defer to, at this point, this is very early for us, for conceptual for the building. I haven't had any conversation about, but I would, if Jerry or Lee can answer that question for you, I'd rather turn it over to them.
Okay. Jerry, Riccardi?
Chairman, ladies and gentlemen of the Commission, thank you. With respect to underground utilities or overhead wires in the area of the project, it's always a careful interplay between where the wires are, whose property they're on, what the overall general plan for development in the entire sector is, and then the cost. And that's a, that's a combination of events we haven't fully explored yet until we get further into the project detail. It always comes up during the planning stage, and it certainly always comes up during the drawing stage of the project. But where the utilities are placed and how they will be run is certainly beyond the expertise which we have fielded here today. But it is certainly something that always comes up and is addressed and is part of the application process, part of the permit process, and always addressed during construction.
Just one other question, maybe two. On the retail portion of your presentation, as you talked about, is there any dining uses that are planned in this project, large or small?
Well, we have 10,000 square foot, and typically in the restaurant business, restaurants, a subway could be 1,000, a restaurant could be 5,000. So, we haven't ruled it out, but we, at this point, we're earmarking about 10,000 square feet, which we think is about reasonable for this to activate the street. As you saw, it basically fills most of the street. It depends on, as we move through it, basically what the market is, what the market is.
It just seems to me, and I'm no architect or developer, obviously, but it just seems to me that with Route 1, with Main Street, that it just begs for some kind of outside dining, some kind of, again, whether it's a high-end or, you know, a moderately priced kind of dining, that area just seems to...
Well, we do have the ability to do it. I'm not saying, the sidewalk that we have there is a little bit wide, but we...
Somebody had to see the opportunity to say they want to come there.
You know, it's interesting, as you know, we've been active in Laurel for quite some time. And one of our models for development is we enter into jurisdictions, we commit to them and we stay with them. We began developing in Silver Spring in probably 2004. We put up two high-rises proximate to the Silver Spring Metro and likewise a mid-rise across from the technical center. And we're actually now in the planning stage of another project in downtown Silver Spring that will probably take another two years in planning and another two years in construction. So, we'll have a long footprint there. And likewise, we have enjoyed very much working within the city and have enjoyed working in the area as well, but have a particular affinity working in the city. And so have a, have a long-term commitment here. And one of, part of that commitment is we're in the area frequently. We tour here frequently with investors. We meet with our bankers here. Everything from land planning to retail brokers to all, all this, this conglomeration of team skills we bring to the area. And one of the things that's been evident to us over time is that, is that more dining is better and in-demand in Laurel. We come here all the time. We're amazed at the vitality. If you look at the traffic on Route 1, the awareness and activity on Main Street and the general demeanor of the area, it's ready for a lot more restaurants. We would love to have a kind of, and I don't know, they use the term a lot, they use the term a white tablecloth restaurant at the corner of Main Street and Route 1. We're working with a brokerage firm called Street Sense to look for that client or that type of operator. We do not expect a national chain. We would like a boutique-style restaurant at the corner. And I would imagine they would take a fair amount of square footage, but that, that kind of depends on the operator. And we hadn't really explored outside seating areas, but it's certainly something we would look at. But we were focused more on the corner bay at this point. But we have retained a retail firm specifically for that purpose. And just coming here frequently, notice, we think it's definitely the time.
Great. Thank you.
Can I add something to that? I don't mean to sound like a web Mike, because I couldn't...
Well, don't do it, Ed.
But you have to be very, very careful, because one of the issues we had with developers in the state for some time is, this is not Metro, this is Mark. And the amount of people that ride here, at least the city, says, will probably not exceed 20% of the people who ride the train, which means they'll leave their car if they have one in the garage. 80% will leave during the day. And if you have a restaurant, you have to be careful when those 80% come back at nighttime with you, not parking for everybody. I joined the president, because as much as any restaurant company would, it has to be done very carefully because this is one of those places, and I'll give you the worst example in town, at Pasta Plus, when there ain't no space, you're out of luck, because you cannot just vaunt into the next block. There are no other opportunities unless, which I'm sure the state would make available, if you do want to have a dining opportunity, you could either arrange that a valet service, and I'm sure the state would not have any objection of using the parking garage in the evening when the other, when the other people are so off. So, it is, it's definitely...
Yeah. I certainly think with the expertise in this room, that if it's feasible, that something like that could happen, given all the things, Carl, that you pointed out. It's just my two cents. One last thing. The parking structure. I think it was mentioned in our work session of the Maryland City Council that this would-be, could-be shared parking, that is, residents who may be out during the day at work and other places, this parking structure could be used by anyone who may be shopping in the Main Street area or anything like that?
I don't think it'd be, excuse me, I don't think it'd be available because...
It won't, okay.
Laurel Station is the most heavily used in the Camden Line, so the chances there be, in the evenings, if there were like an event, that's how we get cars and stuff like that, but it would be a perfect place for people to use during the day. As it is, there's very little chance of getting open space...
Okay.
Even during the day. Because their, the drivers can confirm, their initial or minimum threshold is to replace the spaces one-for-one. It saves us today. And right now, it's safe to say that Laurel has the highest capacity on the Camden Line or at least one of them. I'm not trying to sound like a web Mike.
No, not at all. No, no, great. Thank you.
Good evening. For the record, Wes Guckert with the Traffic Group, a firm of transportation engineers and traffic planners. Let me take you and just highlight two or three, four items that I think are important as it relates to traffic and transportation for this project. The first one was touched upon in that there will be access points into the garage from northbound Route 1 as a right-in only. There'll be a two-way main entrance on Main Street, and then there'll be access off the south end of the building off of First Street. One of the things that we talked about a few moments ago and is in Carl's report is that the access on Main Street, and I do not believe as of right now, it needs to be any kind of lights or whatever. You simply do not have that access point open during the evening commute hour, 4:00 to 6:00, 4:30 to 6:30, 4:00 to 7:00, whatever the hours happen to be. All you need to do is just not have that access open. That's a very easy management tool to use. And then the, those that are coming in can come in off of northbound Route 1, or they can come up First Street or in and out from First Street. So, first, the access will be limited during the commuting hours. Secondly, and most importantly, and we really haven't talked about it quite at all, but the good thing about the Mark Station and the residential is that they're counter-flow. That is, when folks are coming out of the Mark Station in the evening, that's when the residential folks are coming in. So, it's, there's not that conflict, inherent conflict that you would think exists. So, that's an absolutely outstanding use for this site by having it as a residential site. The issue of, of, let's get to, the issue of the garage for the Mark riders, to answer your question, although the garage has not been designed, today's technology is one that's quite easy to have a counter in and out to say, yeah, there's 12 spaces left, or we're filled, don't bother coming in and circulating up and circulating down. So, that's a, that's a real easy piece of technology to install that can notify folks that the garage is filled or that there are spaces available. Now, up until this point in time, and I'm going to look for confirmation, state of Maryland is not charging for parking?
At the present.
At the present time. So, if there were spaces available, Mr. President, folks could use them if it's during the day. They'd be, they'd be available because the state's not charging. Today, they're not charging. So, they become available, and you'd be able to see by the, by the electronic sign that there are 6, 10, 20, 40 spaces available. So, I think that's an, that's an easy fix to help notify people. The other thing is that with the traffic signal here at Lafayette, installing a pedestrian crosswalk, installing pedestrian cross-signing is also an easy thing to do as, as part of the construction of the garage. We talked about the fact that the, there are those pulses that exist for 10 minutes or so when, when cars, when the train cars come, people get in their cars and leave. That's not going to change. And because of the counter-flow that we just talked about, we're really not going to impact that. So, what exists today is not going to get better, but we're not going to make it worse by, by this project. One of the things we found out, pretty interesting, that I think no one had really focused on, is that the traffic along Main Street between Route 1 and 216 is fairly interesting, because what we discovered by doing the traffic study is that the large majority of traffic that's on Main Street today in the evening is coming northbound, making a left on Main, crossing over Southbound 1, proceeding up Main and making a right turn. So, they're making this movement, this Z-shaped movement in very large numbers. It's not, the traffic on Main Street, crossing over Southbound Route 1, is really not coming from the commuter station. It's coming from commuters that are northbound on 1, that are bypassing all of this area in order to get to other sections of North Laurel and to get to Route 216, et cetera, et cetera. It's, it's pretty fascinating when you start to look at how the traffic patterns exist. So, we're not going to impact the situation that exists today with the pulsing. We're going to be counter-flow to that. We're going to close our, our main entrance for the garage during that, that peak period, whatever it is that, that as a city you decide whether it's 4:00 to 6:00 or 5:00 to 6:00 or 4:30 to 5:30, whatever that is. We'll simply close that entrance on Main Street so that we do not add to the queuing for when folks are coming out. Now, clearly, we think there might be some re-timing of the, of the one-way movement under the tracks. That's, that's not a difficult thing to do. And coupled with the pedestrian crossing and the other issues on the garage, I think we're going to have a project that, from a traffic point of view, is going to function quite nicely. And any questions?
I have one more question about the parking. Well, in front of the train station, it looks like there is a little bit of parking that's not part of the site, so that, that space will still, those spaces will still be there.
Correct.
And I guess that, from First Street, they can still circulate around because there's an awful lot of people who drop people off.
Yes, this, so this, this, this parking here remains.
Okay.
And they will, and they will be able to continue to circulate.
Okay, okay, thank you.
I just wanted to correct it and also, if you want to reinforce and actually add CMRT loop service for some of their services in cities, and they can get it in the neighborhood of the bus and actually go to the train station and have the drive there.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
The train track underpass, is there, are there any options for that, or is it, can it only be what it is?
Practically speaking, it'd only be what it is. Sorry.
Just no other option to...
Economically feasible.
Do anything at all with it?
It's all money-driven, and it's, the cost is just, is just beyond, beyond comprehension what it would cost in timing-wise. And, and he wants to say something.
We actually performed a study.
So, you identify yourself?
I'm sorry, I'm Dell Adams from the Maryland Department of Transportation.
Thank you.
We actually performed a study to study that very issue in dealing with the underpass. And we found two things out. One is that we can enlarge the existing underpass. Structurally, that doesn't work. We did find a location a bit to the north that we could have another entrance. It does involve some, taking up some private property, but the costs are much too prohib- It does involve some, taking up some private property, but the costs are much too prohibitive. So at this point in time, we really don't see any effort to change the underpass flow at this point in time. If I may, since I've stolen the stage from Wes here for a second, just a couple of things. We are very open to any sort of shared parking arrangements, both on evenings and weekends. We would also entertain the additional, the adding of some spaces on the garage, if needed, if the developer saw that it fit within his pro forma to increase the size of the garage in order to allow for some additional parking for retail as well. Going back to one other issue of crossing over Lafayette, we are presently engaging in conversations with CSX to talk with them about crossover bridges, something that could come from the garage across Lafayette and across the tracks. We're looking at that in a couple of locations up and down the line. Savage also, which is a project that's coming online soon, we're also looking at it there. So we're starting to gather information about what the feasibility of the cost will be for that and the practicality of including that into our program here. We do understand that that probably would be requiring of some sort of subsidy from the state. We couldn't ask the developer to bore all of that cost.
Certainly.
When you talk about crossover, are you talking about the, like, scuffle across the deck of the train? Not only the train, or actually pedestrian, skyway, where you can cross over and down?
More of a skyway.
Okay.
Yeah, elevators, all the ADA requirements, et cetera. But it's an expensive proposition that we would have to look at, and that's why some form of state subsidy would probably come into play. The other thing is, in terms of parking, your question of access to the garage and knowing the availability of spaces. One thing from the state's standpoint, our primary focus is transportation. It is a matter of making it convenient for our patrons, and we will insist from the developer, any tools that can be used to ensure that folks aren't riding around looking for spaces. Exactly how we do that, we're still in discussions of doing it, but that is a primary focus of the state, that the convenience of the customer has to come first.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, if I could, Mr. Adams, you anticipated my next question when you spoke about possibly looking into expanding some of the available parking that would be there. My question was, why just one-to-one parking? Why not 5%, 10% more than spaces that are currently on the site? And the question I was raising is, is it a matter of funding? Is it a matter of not enough space on the site? Just what the issue may be?
Yeah, actually, we have been in conversation with the MTA of late, talking about future expansion, exactly how that would be handled. One of the things that we have built into the program already is that the garage needs to be built structurally to allow for additional floors to be added. So we are looking down the road as to what our future needs would be. We're not quite sure, based on a variety of changes and requirements for parking, based on TOD. I have some differences of opinion versus, on a mark line versus a metro line, for example, as to how effective that would be. But it is part of the agenda of our looking forward into what the expansion might incur in terms of the number of spaces, and we do have in the program already that they will be building a garage that structurally can handle additional floors.
Very good. Thank you. Thank you, Chairman.
Anyone else to be heard?
I think you may have some citizens here to talk, but I do want to thank you for your time. We have concluded our presentation. We're certainly here to answer any questions that you might have. We appreciate your time tonight and
Certainly, welcome.
to moving on.
This is very, thank you very much. Is there anyone who signed up to speak that hasn't had an opportunity to do so? Please.
My name's Tim Abel. I own properties on Lafayette Avenue, 114, 122, and 144 Lafayette Avenue. I'm here this evening missing some of my favorite shows, NCIS is one.
Right.
And I have to say that if I was Agent Gibbs right now, I would probably want to give the traffic engineer a bop in the back of the head, because this is a bunch of stuff. This is way too early to even be considering a conceptual plan. I travel to my property at 122 at least four times a day, morning, afternoon, and PM, for 12 years now. I can tell you exactly traffic flows. I can tell you what happens at 5:30 in the morning, at 6 o'clock in the morning, and at 7 o'clock in the morning, and 7:30 in the morning. Those are the various times that I come to work in the morning. I can tell you that when I come down to Route One, because of the god-awful traffic, I'm sorry, sequencing of the lights, that I turn right on to Route One, I go to the diner and I turn left and cut to their parking lot, and I turn left to go north on Route One, to turn right again on to Main Street, to go underneath the bridge, because the lights aren't sequenced. So you sit at the red light on one side, you go a half a block, you sit at the red light on the other side. It's crazy. But what happens is when you do all this, when the traffic is coming at 7 o'clock in the morning, the traffic backs up from the train station across Route One, the entire block of Main Street to Southbound is gridlocked. So people are turning right, going through the diner, turning left on Route One, but now going into the parking lot of the train station, turning left on First Street to go underneath the light, to go underneath the main, underneath the bridge, to Lafayette. That's in the morning. On the afternoon, you have now all the traffic that's coming from the parking lot that the state highway owns, I mean, that MDOT owns, as well as the American Legion lot, all trying to fit either underneath of that bridge with that light. And all the traffic signals and the crosswalk signals for pedestrians all exists. So it's not something that has to be added. It exists. It doesn't work. Because when people are coming underneath of the bridge, people don't see that traffic coming. So they walk across the red light. Even if it says, "Don't walk," they walk. I turn right, and I'm going very slow, because I know if I'm going fast, I'll probably hit somebody. It just doesn't make sense to move all the traffic that is, or all the parking that's now on this side, on the Main Street or Route One side, over to the Lafayette side. Now we will have complete gridlock trying to get underneath of that bridge. You say to yourself, okay, we'll limit traffic going under the bridge. They have to turn left and go up Lafayette, south on Lafayette. Well, now what do they do? They turn left into Residential Road on Irving Street? Or they go and turn right to go underneath another very narrow bridge? It is not designed for this. To conclude on traffic, what I need to find out, and this is a yes or no answer, will the site where the parking lot, I'm sorry, where the apartments be owned by the state? Or is that going to be privately owned? Is it still going to be state property?
Yes.
Okay. Is the property going to be rental units versus owned units? So the state is not going to be paying any property taxes on this property to the city of Laurel?
Well, that's the, the, for all of, if I can speak into that, you have a record.
I'll share it with.
The state land is not taxable, but all improvements on the land will be taxable. So all the buildings that the developer builds will be taxed.
So if it was privately held, the city would be receiving tax revenue based on the value of the property, value of the buildings, any improvements, any other type of taxes. Those are the things I think that need to be addressed. What are we as taxpayers getting out of this deal? We're getting more traffic. We're getting more headaches. Are we making any more money to offset the cost? To offset the additional police? To offset the cost of picking up trash for more residents and rental properties? I don't know the answer to that question. In reference to my good friend and neighbor, Bob Claccoon, I'm sorry, Richard Claccoon, who testified last night in front of the Maryland City Council, a lot of the trucks that are following those GPS and coming up and not making it are coming to my property. They're making deliveries to me on Lafayette Avenue. A lot of times, I'll get a phone call, and I'll drive over there and have to back the truck up onto Route One so he can get out, just to get the truck cleared. There is not enough traffic area, enough road area for a tractor-trailer to turn right onto First. It certainly does not fit underneath of the bridge, and those trucks are not going to go away. They're going to come. Truck drivers do what the GPS tells them, or the instructions that their office gave them. It's going to happen. You're not going to change that, okay? So we have to understand, truck drivers are truck drivers, not rocket science. Go where they're told to go. There is, right now, gridlock. We are, you know, talk about your classifications, D-ratings and all that kind of stuff. It is gridlocked right now, as we speak, in the morning, coming underneath the bridge, going down Main Street, across Route One, north and south, to go underneath the bridge to turn right on Lafayette. It's gridlocked in the morning. So what are we going to do with the traffic now that used to park on the west side of Lafayette? They're now got to go underneath of that bridge. You're making the situation even worse. Okay, what do we do with the traffic in the afternoon? That half that traffic, or half those cars were over here. Now they're all over here. They all have to go underneath that bridge. I'm not opposed to development. I own properties. I want development. Helps the city, helps the tax base. This is not the place to put any kind of development. We're bringing in more traffic or making a bad situation worse, and I thank you all for your time.
Before you leave, sir, did you speak before the city council?
I was busy last night, and I will not be able to meet, because I'll be in San Francisco on the 28th, so if President Smalls could pass on my words, as well as I've had this discussion with Councilman Edgins as well. And by the way, I don't know if some of you know me. My name's Tim Abel. I'm a former city councilman here in town. I have been in Laurel for
And could you put that in writing, your testimony?
Absolutely.
Would you like to have that?
I would.
Please.
Sure.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
We'd like to conclude by addressing some of the issues that have been raised by Mr. Abel and then conclude our presentation.
Okay.
I have to, I have to admit, Mr. Abel touched on taxes and traffic, and in Washington DC, those are always touchy subjects. And I, you know, I have to give due respects to Wes. He takes accurate traffic counts. They're painful, they're laborious. Unfortunately, in front of the passengers. But, you know, there's always open discussion about the conclusions that are drawn from traffic studies, what methods are used to improve them, and what methods are possibly available. But I'll leave that to Wes or Bill to touch on. With respect to taxes, I think it is important. Whether we buy the site from the state, or the state continues to own it and we lease it, we have to have long-term beneficial use of the entire site, and that constitutes a transfer of value. And in essence, whether we own it, we lease it, or work out some overlay with the state, we are going to be paying the full real estate tax burden associated with it. Taxes and developers don't get along, so, you know, that's always, that's always a longstanding process where we complain about taxes, but we are getting beneficial use of the site in full, and there'll be the real estate tax burden that goes with it, which is paid, I think, in part to the city and part to the county.
In conclusion, I just want to summarize by saying, this is not a proposal that we thought up. We have thought up the concept of this specific development proposal, but the city has come forward with adopting revitalization overlay zones to create the opportunity to redevelop the corridor in the city that it's designated in its good graces for redevelopment. Now, that has to be done responsibly, and it has to be done in taking into account concerns of the city and the citizens of the city, and the state in this case, because they own the property. And we think we are doing that, and we'll continue to work on these issues. I know that whenever development comes into a community, there are issues, and we don't hide from that, and we will continue to work with the community as we go forward. But I would say that right now, as this property stands, it is of no tax benefit to the city. This proposal will, as Leith described to you, put a portion of this property on the city's tax rolls and will create revenue. And then I would say also, with a residential multifamily proposal, all of the services related to that are privately contracted for. Trash removal specifically is privately contracted for and arranged through the management company. It does not get city trash pickup. The proposal here is a balancing. It's a balancing of, in an urban corridor, trying to create a new environment that will invite a more active streetscape within this portion of the city and hopefully spur other things to happen in the city. Now, that will bring activity. It will bring people. It will bring cars. And we will be working to do our part to make sure that happens as seamlessly as it can. I'm not going to say there's not going to be a new car on the road, and that there's not going to be issues with traffic. But as you've heard, what we're trying to do is look at things like limiting access on the streets at certain times when the pulse of traffic is particularly bad, making sure that there is not inefficient use of the parking structure so that commuters and other people using that garage know if there's space available, and other measures that may be thought of in terms of pedestrian access improvements to the station itself, and things that we can do to be good citizens, corporate citizens, coming into the city. And as Leith said, they are invested here and are in it for the long term. And so we take comments very seriously, and we will continue to work on those things. I would say also, with the type of proposal we're talking about, we will not be creating a need for any new tractor-trailer uses to our site. That is a problem that we'd like to be part of the solution for, because once we're up and running with residents there, they won't like that issue as much as the existing residents do. So that's something I think we all work together on, to figure out if there's a way to discourage tractor-trailer use in that area that is really not appropriate. And we've heard that tonight, and we heard it last night, so that's obviously an issue that the community has observed. And if we can work together to help work on that issue, we're glad to do that. Again, we think we meet the purposes and intent of your overlay zone as set forth in the staff report. I did make one recommendation or request for a modification of a condition to allow us to use other mechanisms that would achieve the purpose of that condition number two. We'd appreciate consideration of that change. And with that, if there's no other questions, we are requesting approval at this stage and here to answer any other questions you might have. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Chairman, if I could just make one really quick comment?
You don't have to make it quick.
You guys can continue.
Before you make your comment, your comment, some of the information that we got this evening was a surprise. We look at the paper. I didn't attend the meetings prior to this getting here. Mr. Abel's comments were rather insightful. I don't, I don't hit the traffic spots like he does to see that. I didn't think about the tax revenue, that kind of thing. That's not our place, or my place, as I see it, or this board, this panel's place. I see that as a council issue. So put that in your response.
My comment is more related to council than this commission, so your statement's taken appropriately. First of all, Carl, I'd like to ask, in the information that we have in the packet for this application, I flipped through, and no feasibility study is part of this?
They do that at the final.
At the final?
Fiscal impact analysis. It's the same one that, when Klingbill was here this evening with their final, their fiscal analysis, they must also have one as well before they finish their final.
Okay, all right. And I'd just like to ask Mr. Abel and anyone else who spoke at our council meeting last night, who have any concerns, if we could just compile those, if we could share those with the applicant as well as members of this commission, so that at our next mayor and city council meeting, hopefully the applicant will have had an opportunity to prepare some type of response that will address any of the concerns that were raised here tonight, as well as that were raised at last night's council meeting. So, Mr. Abel, I'll give you my information so you can provide those comments to me, and we'll be sure that they'll be part of the record at our council meeting. That's all I have. Thank you.
If I can just take 60 seconds, because it
If I can just take 60 seconds, because I'm just going to hit you with the recommendation and the six, and very, very quickly touch on them. Obviously, this is a conceptual. We have a long way to go to the final. We're recommending approval, but number one, the Public Works continues to review. We have literally spent years on some of the very questions and I'm not taking, not minish anything that's been said. We've had the land improvements, taxes, the whole thing. So this is, you know, all those things can still be, I think, obviously in the public debate. But we, in the meantime, if this is approved by the council, we recommend the Public Works continues to amend a traffic plan because there's a lot of tweaking that can be done with lights. There's other things. I don't know if it'll solve everything. The one thing that Mr. Claccoon testified to last night is, we need some signs to tell people, "You can't turn here and get wedged under the bridge." And if they're not, if they're there, they need to be a whole lot bigger than they are. I don't think it'll stop everything, but it might stop some of them. Number two, the staff, we recommend, I agree with Mr. Schiff, what we're trying to do is stop people from coming out of the garage during PM rush. If there's other ways to do that, it doesn't have to be electronic. We certainly would recommend that you consider, you know, another option if you so choose. That will work out by the time the final plan is submitted to you. The phasing plan, obviously, is when the main building can begin versus the garage being finished. That's number three. Number four, this is, the applicant must secure permission from the transit administration that the station be uplit at night and shall pay for the perpetual cost of such lighting. Number five, applicants work with Parks and Recreation. There are some Parks and Recreation's exactions or similar kind of things that you saw in the Kling Bell this evening that have to be worked out before the final plan. And six, I'm very happy that the applicant seems to embrace. There are some units at the street level that face Second Street. So the recommendation is to give them the option to use them residentially or for office. Because again, in a building where 80% of the people are gone during the day, I think there's opportunities for limited office space in this building because chances are, they leave. When I lived up at Tuxton Place, my space was used probably 10 times a day by people coming and going to various doctors' offices. So when we came in in the evening, our spaces have been used a lot. And I do think that because of the high level of residential use, that they... It's an option we're offering them to have. We're not mandating it. But I think particularly the five suites on the ground level lend themselves to that. As such, with those five, with the six conditions recommended in the staff report, we recommend you approve it, a conditional plan and instruct the applicant to prepare a final plan of revitalization overlay based on everything, on the report, the technical staff report and the testimony.
Carl, that's what I wanted to clarify, that in the staff report. Mr. Abel, did you get a copy of the staff report? And if he hasn't, can he get a copy?
Oh, absolutely.
Because, and the reason I say that is, while I didn't state it earlier, my thought exactly was, right now, anyone traveling to that parking lot, going northbound on Route 1, has got easy access into that parking lot and easy access pretty much back out and going through the one-lane bridge. So I think all of us were kind of thinking that. But from what I was viewing, coming in, having prepared to come in to listen to the testimony, the staff report, at least to me, and I'm the new, I'm the new one on the committee, clearly stated that since the state and applicant are only requesting conceptual overlay approval, there is time to refine these issues. And these issues that that statement's referring to are three paragraphs on traffic concerns. So I did want to clarify that what Mr. Abel raised, if we have a motion here to approve this conceptual here, that in fact, what the staff report says is that this is only approving that the concept is working, that we still have plenty of time for not only us, but for the commission, for the full mayor and city council.
Correct. When the mayor and city council affirm that, all those concerns carry forward. Because then again, I'm not trying to say this because it's convenient to.
No.
This project's been around a long time and a lot of it is due to the very things we talked about tonight.
Right. Okay. That makes, does that make sense?
Yes, it makes a lot of sense. I think that's what we're all trying to get to. And really appreciate, I appreciate the perspective that comes up from the people who live on the block, okay? And sometimes that doesn't get before the people who prepare documents before they get here. Because I found, this is the second time, well, second time in a quarter, where I felt we're sitting here doing things that should have happened elsewhere. It just, it feels like we're not, that's not our job. So I'm hearing that we can approve on this concept that some of the questions raised this evening will be addressed and resolved before the next step comes before this body. Is that accurate? Okay. If that's the case, are we ready to entertain a motion? Okay.
Do this and add one, and you will tell me if I have failed to do that. I would like to make a motion to approve the revitalization overlay application number R... I think that's O, not zero, right? RO3-1-2012, conceptual overlay plan ordinance number 1763, 100 Main Street, Mark Train Station Project, filed by Baldwin LLC, care of Patriot Realty, for recommendation to the mayor and city council to include the staff recommendation with a edit to number two to include after-directional arrows or other control measures. And can I add a number seven on the recommendation that testimony from this evening or the additional traffic notes also be considered in, does that make, does that work? Okay. So I'd like to add a number seven to make sure that we have on the record for the recommendations, that those are, get full consideration and all. And include action on resolution number 13-02-PC.
Has been moved. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Thank you, Mr. Kish. Mr. King, you call her all.
Mrs. Bettman?
Yes.
Mr. Kish?
Yes.
Mr. Wilford?
Yes.
Mrs. Holland?
Yes.
Chairman Wilford?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. I'd like to thank everybody for their input tonight, a lot, a lot. And it was heard and we will respond.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Where am I now?
Carl, please put this into the record, that we worked about two hours overtime.
Yeah.
We want compensation for that. Sarah?
Okay, just a minute. Anything else to come before this body this evening?
Not at all.
Meeting's adjourned. Thank you, one and all.